I'm going to call the regular meeting of the Eugene School Board to order on Wednesday, June 1st, 2022. It's 7:03 PM. We have board members Alicia Hayes, Maya Rabasa, Michelle Shu, Laurel O'Rourke, and myself Judy Newman, and we expect Gordon Layfer to join us any minute. And Curthe will not be joining. She might join during our time for items for action a little bit later. She's out of town. Please join me in the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag
of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I will now read the land acknowledgement. The Eugene School Board would like to acknowledge that our institution sits on the homelands of the Kalapulia people. In the treaties of 1851 and 1854 through 1855, and the subsequent forced removals of many Indian people from western Oregon, some of the Kalapulia were moved to the Grand Ron reservation and some were moved to the Slets Reservation. It's important to note that all of Lang County was an important trading and gathering area for camis and other resources. During the Restoration Era from 1977 to 1989, Lang County was designated as a service area of the Confederate tribes of Cusse, Lower Umquah, and Sayusla Indians, the Confederate tribes of Grand Ron Indians, and the Confederate tribes of Slets Indians, the Coquill Indian Tribe, and the Cow Creek Band of Umquah Indians. District 4J acknowledges that the descendants of original and service area inhabitants of this land are still here today. They are thriving members of our schools and our communities. Countless members of other tribes now also call our community and schools their home. We wish to thank those original stewards of this land. We, as fellow stewards of this land, wish to remember that we need to take good care of this land and take good care of all the members of our school district community. Thank you. And I just want to note that board member Gordon Layfer has joined us too. Thank you. Okay, so the first thing we need to look at is the agenda, do an agenda review. And we're wondering if we have anything that we want to add or change on the agenda. Laurel?
Yeah, I have, um, I would like, I don't know, I don't think it's been added to the agenda because it hasn't been amended, but the information you set out earlier today about superintendent's review process, I want to make sure that we, this is part of public record, that this is going to be done and that we have a vote on that.
Maya, you had your hand up. Did you have something to, how to add it?
No, that was actually what I was going to ask to add to the agenda as well as for information to discuss and make sure we're all on the same page as to the process by which we conduct the evaluation.
Well, I think, so how about we add it to the item for information since we've already voted on it and it's just a review and an update of where we are. It has, it's in the record of being voted on, so.
No, because you almost didn't do it. So I think we need, as a board, to have a agreement that this, what you proposed, which is new, is going to be what we're going to do. And it's part of public record. And that is how this process works. Using Robert's Rules, we all say, yes, we agree to this, and then we do it, and it's in public record. And that's why I want it. I don't want it in our email. I want it here on our.
Okay, we agree. Okay. Gordon, did you have something on this topic? Or Myers has something else? No? Maya? Good. Okay. We will add it to the agenda then. Gordon?
I would like to pull from the consent agenda, item five, which is about the transfers, transfer funds from one account to the other. Just to get an explanation, my understanding is we're devoting money to facilities or construction projects. I just want to get an understanding of exactly what the proposal is to do with that.
Is there agreement on that from the board? I think we just need to.
I think any one person who pulls something from the consent agenda means it's not universal consent. Somebody can correct.
Under the items for action as well, Gordon. Number five. Is that right?
Yeah.
I mean, items for information. Apology. Yeah.
No, I think it, I'll leave that up to the superintendent. I thought it was here because it's something that we are being asked to vote on tonight. Then it would be item for action.
You do need to vote on it, Judy. Okay, yes, we'll put it for items for action. Thank you. Sorry, misspoke. Laurel, is your hand up for another item? No? Okay, great. Okay, then with those two changes, adding the information about superintendent evaluation and pulling number five from the consent agenda to items for action, do we, can we get a motion to, well, approve that agenda then? Laurel?
I motioned that we add those two items to the agenda.
Any second? Laurel moves and Michelle seconds. So all those in favor, raise your hand. Okay, it looks like there are six yes votes. Thank you. That's unanimous here. Okay. Now we will move to the introduction of guests and the superintendent's report. Interim Superintendent Vanderkar?
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Newman and board members. It's hard to believe it's June already, and this is the last board meeting before students and teachers end their year and the last meeting with our student representatives. The first days and the last day of schools are my favorite times of the school year. By the time we get to June, though, staff retired after working hard all school year. But this month also brings creative capstones and celebrations of our students and all the learning and accomplishments of the past year. High school graduation ceremonies start next week, back at their traditional locations, and elementary ocean and farewell events the week after. I can hardly wait to see all the graduating seniors walk in their caps and gowns to receive their diplomas after all of their efforts and all of the care we have poured into them from kindergarten through 12th grade. It's a momentous, meaningful milestone, and I look forward to it every year. Another hallmark of each May or June is finalizing the budget for the next year. The district's budget for 2022, 2023, was recently approved by the 4J Budget Committee to forward to the school board for adoption. Thank you to the committee members on the committee along with board members for contributing to the process. And thanks to the financial services staff and other district staff for their work, holding several meetings and answering many questions from budget committee members through this year's robust process. As part of this evening's meeting, the board will hold the legally required public hearing for the budget and then consider adoption of the budget as an item for future action to vote on approval on June 22nd. We've made important investments and are at a hopeful point building on our mental health services, staffing to support equity and positive school experiences for traditionally underserved students, career technical education programs, and wraparound services to our families. I recommend that the board approve adoption of this budget with a note of caution for the future. The district's costs are rising beyond the amount we can expect to receive in ongoing state funding. This will need to be considered carefully in future decisions about any further spending increases. First, our student enrollment has shrunk and our workforce has not. We've seen our student numbers go down during the pandemic, and across the state of Oregon, almost 30,000 fewer students throughout the state are attending at this time. In 4J, we have continued staffing schools at a higher level, not decreasing staffing to match the decreasing student numbers. This has helped us keep staffing stable, mitigate class sizes and teacher workload, and stay ready for those students to return to our schools. We hope and expect that enrollment will begin to recover as the pandemic recedes, but we cannot be certain of future enrollment growth. In short, we are staffing our schools and spending our budget as if we had more students than we do. Our average class size right now is 22 at the elementary level, 25 in middle schools, and 21 in high schools, while our normal teacher staffing ratios are 26, 27, and 29. This is a temporary boon for teachers and students, but it's not sustainable. Since most of our funding is based on enrollment, this is an area to watch carefully. Second, our regular revenues are outpaced by our growing costs. State school funding is not rising as fast as the cost for school districts to maintain the current service level, even without any increases in services or other costs. And with school districts receiving federal funding for pandemic relief, the state funding that is our primary ongoing revenue is not projected to increase to meet these needs. At the same time, long-term ongoing costs are being increased over the baseline service level with higher ongoing labor costs and added staff. Third, short-term or one-time pandemic relief funds are being used to fill the gap. We are grateful to have this federal and state funding targeted to help schools support student, family, and staff needs. This spending is addressing many good and important purposes, including compensating staff, relieving employee workload, and supporting students' mental health, socio-emotional, and academic learning needs. We are spending today's dollars to support today's students and staff in important ways. Still, it's critical to be aware that some of these costs are ongoing and the funding is not. When one-time funds are spent on recurring costs like raising compensation and adding staff, we receive $1 one time, but we spend $1 this year and $1 the next year and the dollar the year after that. You get it. This builds a looming cliff, and it grows with every increased expenditure of one-time funds for ongoing costs. When pandemic relief funds are spent and we return to normal school funding levels, spending will need to decrease to match. I caution the board and the district to be aware of that growing cliff and make thoughtful choices about spending to help mitigate the impact, not increase it. Another important recognition is in June, is Juneteenth, a holiday that honors the end of the enslavement of African Americans in the United States and emphasizes education and achievement. It is on June 19th, which was the day in 1865 that federal troops arrived in Galveston, Texas to take control of the state and ensure that the quarter million people still enslaved in Texas were freed. That was a full two and a half years after the Emancipation Proclamation ordered the abolition, oh my gosh, abolition of slavery in the United States. Juneteenth was officially recognized as a federal holiday and a state holiday in Oregon in 2021. This year, June 19th falls on the Sunday after school ends and is observed on Monday. Absent objection from the board, we plan to observe Juneteenth as a holiday with no effect on compensation this year in advance of bargaining discussions about holidays in future years. The board will hear public comment from several community members tonight, and there has been mention recently of the process for how the board hears public comment. The board normally has time set aside for public comment at each regular school board meeting. Before the pandemic, there was 30 minutes for public comment at the beginning of the meeting, and in the Zoom era, that's been translated to 10 speakers with three minutes each. Community members who would like to provide public comment in a board meeting sign up before the meeting by 5:00 PM on the Monday before the meeting. They can submit online form, or they can call the district office if they don't have internet access. If requests to speak are received from more than 10 people, which I understand is not common, priority is given to residents who did not provide public comment during the previous two meetings, and then the selection of speakers is made randomly. The board secretary contacts everyone who made a request and lets them know if they had been scheduled to speak and how to attend the meeting. The board has had this process in place for a year and a half since fall of 2020, when the board changed from getting public comments by email only in the early months of the pandemic to hearing speakers live on Zoom. I don't have a hand in the details, but I understand the process has worked well overall. There have been some refinements over the past year and a half. In any process, there always is room to reflect and consider whether to make adjustments. Suggestions for change we've heard include scheduling times to hear public comment in addition to regular board meetings, giving a priority to parents of current students, selecting speakers for a balance of viewpoints rather than randomly and content neutral as it is done now, accepting requests to speak after the deadline if there are less than 10 already signed up, and having a waiting list of speakers who can be given a time slot if one of the 10 doesn't show up for the meeting. If the board wants to make changes in this process for next school year or at any point, the board support staff will make adjustments accordingly. And finally, this is the second to the last regular board meeting of the year and the last one before teachers and students end this school year. I'd like to take this opportunity to honor our staff's efforts and celebrate all of our students' learning, connection, and accomplishments over the past nine months. Thanks to all of our 4J staff and to the board for your work. Thank you.
Thank you. So now it's an opportunity for the board chair, myself, to give some comments. I want to start my comments tonight by acknowledging Catherine Tagworker, a longtime employee in 4J who was recently named the statewide Oregon School Employees Association Employee of the Year for 2022. And OSEA, as some of you might know, represents about 20,000 classified workers statewide, primarily in the education sector. So it's really an amazing honor to be the employee of the year of this organization. Catherine started working in 4J in 1987, and she's still with us after 35 years. She worked in the kitchen at several schools before moving to Spring Creek in 2009, where she still is working. She also worked as a life skills educational assistant during the summers for about 20 years. She's well-known to students and staff alike for her humor, warmth, and empathy, and she's made 4J a better place to work and learn because her tireless commitment to the nutrition and health of students. The state OSEA president described Catherine by saying her big heart and passion for supporting students make her a leader both in her school and in the community. The impact she makes is truly inspiring. The principal at Spring Creek said, "There isn't a single person in our school community who doesn't actually love, adore, and respect her." So please join me in congratulating Catherine Tagworker for this really great honor. We're proud to have her in our district. And I want to publicly express my appreciation for the Lane Arts Council, EEF, and the Eugene Rotary for their partnership with the Eugene School District to bring artists into all of our elementary schools through Art Sparks Program. We all want to find ways to expand access to the arts for our students, and this is one really great example of how to do this. I know you've heard some great, tonight you're going to hear some great testimony about this effort, and it's in, most of it is in this budget that we're approving tonight. And it's a great example of community and school district partnership that provides opportunity and benefit for all of our elementary schools. I know my grandkids always share their excitement when they get to work with an actual artist and resident in their school, and they get to do that two times a year thanks to this program. So thank you so much for those efforts. And finally, I want to take a little time to thank the team that led and participated in the robust process of piloting and selecting an English language arts curriculum. The team included 60 teachers, including Tosas and the Director of Instruction, and I'd like to personally thank each of you for taking on this really additional workload and to help inform the process and selection. The board voted to initiate this English language arts curriculum adoption process in early September of 2021, in hopes of completing it this school year. At these meetings, we learned that we have a high rate of mobility within our school districts, within our own school district, and that having common curriculum would help prevent students from falling behind. We needed curriculum that included diverse voices and people that reflect our students, staff, and community. We asked that equity be at the core of this selection process. We also wanted to ensure that the curriculum aligned with the best practice in reading instruction to help all kids be successful. And we wanted a curriculum that allowed teachers to be creative and engage and excite students in learning. This was a pretty tall order, and now nine months later, this amazing team of educators has recommended a curriculum suite that meets these goals of diversity, equity, and best instructional practice. Last week, many of our board members got to view the materials and hear more about the process, and I'm excited about where we are today. I want to share just a few of the quotes that we've seen in some of the presentation materials that I think really describe best where we are. One teacher said, "The students who struggled the most were successful in learning how to sound out words, write, and spell. I didn't really expect whole group instruction to go so well." Another said, "Kids forgot they were in reading class. Even kids who previously did not think of themselves as readers were engaged in discussions and activities." And my favorite quote of all is, "We are teaching everyone to read." So too many of our students are far behind in reading, and it's our duty to be sure they get the highest quality instruction. So in closing, I just want to extend my heartfelt appreciation and thanks to everyone who participated in this very ambitious process and brought forward this curriculum suite tonight. I'm looking forward to voting on the adoption. Thank you. So the next thing on the agenda is that we get to receive reports from our high school students. And as Superintendent Vanderkar said, this is the last meeting when kids, students are still in school. So this is our last meeting with our student reps. And I just want to really thank them for being part of this group that we've really enjoyed. I mean, I think it's been wonderful that they've been able to represent their schools and their peers and for sharing their voice. So they have a gift, a little gift, and a certificate for each one of them, and I believe that's going to be delivered to you. So that will be great. So I see three of our members here to our board, our student reps, tonight. I'm just going to see, I see Noah first on my screen. So why don't you take your time, Noah? Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me today. We are really nearing the end of the school year, and that is pretty clear, both in the different things going on at South and also just sort of everyone's attitude right now. Everyone is very excited for the summer. Currently, it's Spirit Week at South, and we have a different theme every day, and students can dress up according to the theme. For example, today was Twin Day. And then on Friday, we have a summer send-off party, which will be at South, and there's a bunch of different games, activities, and foods that will be available to students just sort of as a celebration for the end of the year. And then next week, which is the last week of school for seniors, is Senior Week. And so there's a different activity each day in order to honor seniors and the accomplishment of graduating. So for example, there's a senior sunset, a college t-shirt or future plans day, as well as senior superlatives are going to be announced that week. And then on June 7th is South's Awards Night to honor achievement in academics and various achievements by South students. And that is sort of everything that is going on. Sort of just, everyone is definitely feeling ready for the end of the year. And last but not least, I just want to say thank you for being able to be a part of, to represent South on the school board. I've been lucky enough to be a part of, to be representing South since my sophomore year. So I'm sad to see it come to an end, but I'm very thankful for this opportunity. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Noah, and good luck next year. So Violet, you are next.
Perfect. Hello. Hi. Happy Pride Month, everybody. Just wanted to get that out there. And obviously, like Noah was saying, it's the end of the year, so everybody's kind of like overt at this point. But I sort of wanted to use like my last moment as like sort of having this position, able to speak at these meetings, sort of talk about how other students within IHS, within 4J in general, have been feeling lately and sort of how I've been feeling. Quite frankly, I'm pretty tired right now. I'm pretty angry, as I'm sure a lot of you, as members of this board and people listening, are also reflectively feeling. I think we've had a lot of very trying events occurring quite recently, especially with the recent shooting and the fact that this is such a common occurrence. As a student, I've been a 4J student since kindergarten. I went to McCormick, then I went to Kennedy, and now I'm at Churchill and Eugene IHS. And I'm just, I'm just really tired and really angry, I guess, because of the fact that I feel like, as a student, I've so much of the work and so much of the actions that we've all tried to sort of like create and circulate, especially surrounding like, things like gun violence and the threat students face every day being at school is not always addressed just within the world at large from other adults and other people who don't really seem to understand or feel our pain necessarily. This is like, I have like two more weeks of being a 4J student, being a high school student, but I'm not leaving this community in any sense of the word. I have a younger sibling who will be in this district for years to come, and I feel that very real threat every single day. I'm like already like a very on-edge person, so the fact that I'm walking through school for my last two weeks of school, like so affected by these recent events that I have been like feeling my whole life has sort of put like a damper on like what should be very exciting, like I'm leaving school. And I just thought it was important to share that with you all, make sure that students are listening, even when, even when parents or other adults might show up to these meetings or talk to you all and make their voices known. I just wanted to reiterate the fact that like, parents and adults are not the voice of students. Students are the voice of students, and I will be here at the next meeting. I won't be a student anymore, but I'll be a college student at that point, but I'm very still connected to this community, and I just wanted to reiterate that for you all, that students are listening, students are watching, and we do care about these issues, and we're feeling affected by it. So just your, all your votes and your choices really do matter to us, even students who are graduating in the next two weeks. Again, I just want to say thank you. I appreciated my time on this board and being a part of it, being within this community, and especially to all the other student reps. It's been great to serve with you all. So, thank you.
Thank you, Violet, and good luck next year. And thank you for your words. Yeah. Taryn?
Hello. Good to see you all. So mine is a little bit shorter than the others. We have a few things going on for the end of the year. Tomorrow, we have a grad ceremony for our IB students, just recognizing their accomplishments and how they've done because it's strenuous work. It's hard. So the recognize, recognition is really good. And then we also have our first annual Pride Fest. That is really super excited for that. It's going to be on June 3rd. And we're inviting our middle school, our neighboring middle schools as well, to get engagement from them. And then that'll be really nice, feeding into the high schools and having that safe space already created. And then we have our Highlander Heroes is, our pageant is going to be on Saturday. I'm performing in that too, so it's kind of crazy, and it's to support Children's Miracle Network. So it's a really, really amazing cause, and it's nice to be able to get in the community and show off what we've been working on. And then next week, we have senior awards to award all the accomplishments of our seniors and throughout these trying times. And then we also have, we're bringing back our senior stroll, which is where our seniors go in our cap and gowns to our elementary schools, which I think is really cool, coming back from the pandemic. And yeah, that's about all I've got. And I also wanted to thank you guys so very much for having me on this board and having this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and good luck again next year. Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much, and good luck again next year. Yeah, thank you. We are now at, in an annual event on our agenda, which is a public hearing on the 2022-23 budget. So I have a preamble to read, which is, it's a little bit long, so bear with me. In accordance with Oregon's local budget law, the district has held seven budget committee meetings this year, beginning in January, to review, discuss, and approve the district's budget. As a vehicle to enable the public to participate in the budget process, a public comment period was offered at each of these meetings per ORS 294 dot four one four. After reviewing public testimony and finishing deliberations, the budget committee approved the 2022-23 proposed budget on May 16, 2022. The committee completed their statutory responsibility by declaring the general fund and local option levy tax rates and the debt service fund tax levy amount for the coming year. Notice, notice this budget hearing and the 2022-23 budget totals was published in the Register Guard on Sunday, May 22, 2022. This hearing is on, on the 2022-23 budget as approved by the budget committee on May 16, 2022. Any person may comment on the budget, and the school board receives written comments by email at board@4j.lane.edu and has set aside time to hear public comment on the budget tonight. Community members can sign up to speak at the board by submitting their requests online at 4j.lane.edu/board-public-comment. The deadline to submit a request to speak is Monday, May 31st. The public may offer objective comments or criticism about district operations and programs. However, the board will not hear complaints concerning individual district personnel. The district has a board policy for filing a formal complaint against an individual. Please contact the superintendent's office at 541-790-7707 for more information about submitting a formal complaint. So tonight, we have a public hearing for the budget, and we have three people signed up for that to testify. And the first person on the list is Georgianne Jones. Carrie Delf, are you going to usher people in?
Yes, indeed. Ms. Jones is coming in right now, and as soon as she's ready, she can turn on her camera and microphone and speak for her three minutes. She'll be followed by Melanie Ocampo and then Stacy Ray.
My name is Georgianne Jones. I am a community member and also a classified employee. Thank you for hearing public comment tonight and giving some of us the opportunity to speak. I am speaking within a framework of story and voice. I'm going to begin with some stories with permission from others, but with anonymity. A young special ed aide who works another eight-hour job several days a week because she can't live on her 4J pay. Along with being diabetic, she has continued concerns of medical and dental bills and havoc that they cause. A single mom on housing assistance, her pay would never come close to giving the basics for her and her children. Another having much to offer and working about eighty-two, I mean thirty-two hours a week and can't make it still without support of parents and having great concern for the future and for dreams. As I've learned in my work in restorative practices, we all have a sense of what it is like to have dreams taken or delayed. I taught for over three decades, and my nest egg, my dreams, were shattered in 2010 when my home on the East Coast that I had bought two and a half years before had contaminated drywall, which bore holes from the lethal gases right into the, through the copper tubing. And our health for all of us suffering through this was gravely in question. Fortunately, even though I lost everything, even most of my interior and my funds, I came out here to start anew. I'm a single mom. I have a master's in education and organizational development, training, and group dynamics. It was no surprise that I also became passionate and restorative practices to build community, repair harms, design culture of respect, and fair process and equity. My previous work as a teacher, a professional trainer, training others in issues like domestic violence and restorative practices are important strength that I try to bring. My take-home pay this year has been $1,279. I, per month. If I had no other income and rent over $1,000 per month, how could I survive? What does this mean with these stories? We seldom have this board speak of us. So many talents not used on our jobs. We need more pay. We need respect for those who, for what, who we are and really have our voices heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Georgianne. The next speaker is Melanie Ocampo.
Hi, all. I don't expect to use my three minutes, but I love that we're talking about stories. And I love, Judy, that you mentioned, you know, reading and how important that is. I'm simply here to ask that the budget take into account the need for librarians. I'm a mom of two 4J students, one recent graduate and one who is a junior at North, the Highlanders. And I just feel like any opportunity we get to connect kids with stories so that they can imagine the possibilities that they might not even be able to see. And might I also say stories in multiple languages, because even better if we can do that. So I'm simply here to advocate for librarians in every school and, and full teacher librarians. I think the difference we can make is kids finding every opportunity to light them up with things that they're interested in. I think that's the way that we're gonna help students graduate, and we'll see those results at the end, right, with our, our graduation rates. And as a last-minute preparer, I pulled up the budget because I wanted to search for the words, right? Library, librarian, books. I don't know which word is used most in, most in the budget, but it's certainly not library or librarian. But I did find forty-eight times that the word library is included in the budget, three hundred and four-page budget document, and only one time where the word librarian is included. And to me, that felt a little bit alarming, right? Because we've got libraries, we've got books, they're in multiple languages, and we are missing the bridge that helps connect students with stories. And we need librarians to do that. So I give back my minute and fifteen seconds and then just leave you with a plea to help us find ways to connect kids with stories that they need to hear.
Thank you, Melanie.
Happy June, y'all.
And our last scheduled speaker on the budget tonight is Stacy Ray. Hi.
Hi, everyone. My name's Stacy Ray. I'm the executive director of Lane Arts Council. I am here today just to say thank you. Thank you to 4J administration and this board for continuing to support ArtSpark and ensuring that there are funds in the budget for ArtSpark programs next year. We are so grateful for your partnership to make sure that kids have access to art in school. So Lane Arts Council launched ArtSpark in 2017 in partnership with Eugene 4J, Eugene Education Foundation, and Rotary Club to ensure that all 4J elementary students have art in school. It's benefited from a significant amount of community support, and teachers and students look forward to these programs each year. We maintain a roster of over forty teaching artists who lead visual and performing arts programs in 4J elementary schools for up to four weeks. Students get the chance to have unique arts programs like West African music and dance, puppet making, fiddle music, salsa dance, natural dyes, mural painting, and so many more things. We've heard from teachers, administrators, and parents about how having these arts programs in schools contributes to classroom engagement, mental health and well-being, and building a positive and connective school community where students feel like they have voice and that they belong. Art gives students pride in themselves and in their school. It levels the playing field, allowing students to feel successful no matter what they create. And they get to express their own unique voice and know that whatever they create is right and that it matters. So during a recent residency earlier this year, a teaching artist led students in painting ceramic tiles that were installed on school fences in Aubrey Park, River Road, Edison, and Camas Ridge. Many of the students were so excited that their artwork would be visible and be a permanent part of their school. Many of them shared their work with their stu, their parents who came by to pick them up. One student said excitedly to Larry, "My art is going to be here forever. That's so awesome." So when we started ArtSpark, we leaned very heavy on community support to get it started. And it was our hope that eventually the district would fully support the program moving forward. So I understand there's $100,000 total for ArtSpark next year, and I want to take a moment to thank you, to celebrate that, and know that your investment will provide two artist residencies next year and over 2,000 hours of programming in Eugene Elementary School. So thank you so much for prioritizing arts education, supporting our partnership, and helping us make sure that Eugene 4J Elementary students continue to have art as part of their education. Thank you.
Thank you. Those, that, I think those are all the people we had signed up to testify for the budget tonight. So we get to move into items raised by the audience. And the school board receives written comments by email at board, board@4j.lane.edu, and sets aside time in each regular board meeting to hear public comment. Community members can sign up to speak to the board by submitting their requests online at 4j.lane.edu/board-public-comment or contact the superintendent's office. The deadline is Monday before each meeting. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes and cannot give their time to another speaker. A timekeeper will show a sign when the speaker has thirty seconds left and when their time is up. Speakers may offer objective comments or criticism about district operations and programs. For complaints about individuals, the district has a board policy and complaint process. Please contact the superintendent's office at 541-790-7706 for more information about submitting a formal complaint. So tonight, we actually had, I think, originally twenty-five people that wanted to testify. We've been able to accommodate everyone until this meeting. So we used our process that interim superintendent Vanderkar described earlier tonight to fill in those slots. And I just want to thank also Lisa, our wonderful administrative support, because a couple of people canceled at the last minute, and she, I think three people canceled, and she was able to at least fill three of those slots, maybe two of those slots and maybe three at the very last minute. So I really appreciate it. We want to be able to hear from as many people as we can. So we're going to start going through our list, and the first speaker that signed up is Angie Morrell.
We are working to find or get into the Zoom a couple of people. So the first person available on, who's here to speak is Rose Wilde, and she is in as a panelist.
Thank you so much for having me. I just want to first appreciate you and everyone in the district for getting us through a challenging year. Three minutes isn't long enough to, to talk about that, but I've seen you grapple with some pretty challenging issues. And I just, I wanted to share like my own learning and growth from this year has been to lose some fear of having conversations with people who disagree with me. And, and so in light of the public comment question that was raised to the board about what they might change, I would advocate for permitting the greatest extent possible of communication, but between people on the board, if it means adding extra meetings. I, I, I think random is still fair, though, and I appreciate the extra effort to get folks then when you have time constraints and can't get everyone into that meeting, because there could be another one they could come to. I came today just to speak briefly to say that I appreciate and support the move to ban concealed weapons from 4J buildings. I'm a 4J parent. And I do not believe that having guns on, on campus, even with licensed concealed weapons holders, makes them any safer. So I wanted to ask for you to vote for that policy next time. I'm not gonna be able to attend myself. And also, just a quick shout out for the librarians. I, for two and a half years, three and a half years, I volunteered in our school library until the pandemic stopped that. And I really loved it, and I, I miss getting to do that. And I also know that I am in no way a professional and would happily volunteer in a library to support a professional, to bring those resources. I don't think, in the whole time that I volunteered, I saw the district library staff once or twice. I know they were working very hard. But there's no substitute for having someone for your building. So with that, I wish you a happy and healthy summer and appreciate your service. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Rose. Thank you. The next person will be Amanda Voss, coming in as a panelist now. Maybe having some technical difficulties there. We will move on to Deanna Chapel. Ms. Chapel is in the Zoom now. And Ms. Chapel, if you'd like to turn on your video, you can speak for three minutes.
Great, thank you. Did I do it? Yes. Hi, hi, everybody. My name is Deanna Chapel. I'm a lifelong educator. And I'm sorry, I didn't really, as a school counselor in this year, I run out of time every day. So I didn't really prepare anything, but in light of the question of having concealed weapons in school, I just want to tell a little story where I was in my office on the morning after the shooting in Uvalde. And I had a student with me, a student who I've been working with all year and who I know has anxiety and a traumatic past. And so we're getting ready to go into my little room for our meeting, and a very, very angry white man came storming up the hallway. He went, he ran past the, not ran, stormed past the office, came around to where, to where I was and shouted at me, "Where's the principal's office?" And, I mean, concealed weapons are scary because they're concealed. And I didn't know this guy, and he was mad and everything that had just happened. And, you know, I'm having, I'm having my own PTSD triggers. And then this young woman just looked at me with big eyes, like, oh, what are we gonna do? And so we went inside. We had to, I pointed him to the principal's office, threw that guy under the bus, and said, and I said, well, let's just go inside. So we go inside, lock the door, pulled a little curtain, and then we're just sitting there, terrified, just absolutely terrified of what might happen with this very erratic, unpredictable, angry person right outside in the hall. And so I had to say to this fourteen-year-old, so here's how it's gonna be if something starts happening. I want you behind the desk where you have double protection, because, you know, and I'm gonna go under the desk in that little cubby under the desk. And we can hold hands underneath the, underneath the side of the desk. And just, and we were shaking. I was just, I'm really good in a crisis, so I think that she didn't know how terrified I was. The child didn't really know, but it's, it's terrifying to be in schools now. And anything we can do to just make it a little less awful would be so great. So definitely don't, don't allow even licensed people to be carrying guns around our children, please. to be carrying guns around our children, please.
Thank you, Deanna.
Good evening, 4J School Board and Superintendent Vanderkarr. I was told to just start right in, so I'm gonna go in and thank you for sharing your stories. Stories are really powerful. Um, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'd like to ask tonight for some definitions. It appears that many people, myself included, have been being labeled racist or white supremacist. And with such strong words, I'd like more clarification just so that we can move towards a stronger community together. I really want us to work together and I want more understanding. I don't discriminate against people based on the color of their skin, and I reject racism alongside you when we encounter it. The only tattoo I have is the one that speaks of loving all people all the time, no matter what. This is why I'd like to ask the board to define racism, racist, white supremacy, and white supremacist. The people I'm seeing being labeled with these terms or their actions being labeled as racist, including myself, don't appear to me to behold hate towards others based off of the color of their skin or any other characteristic. In fact, they appear to be working towards 4J's values and beliefs to respect and care for one another, doing what's best for all students and continuing to learn and grow. I haven't known what to say when I or others are called racists. The words feel like they've been weaponized to silence voices of differing opinion and discourage others from speaking up in the fear that they might also be labeled a racist for having a different viewpoint. When you hired the Almet Advisory Group, putting over $70,000 of taxpayer money towards them, you showed us that you had high trust in the work that they would do. They paused their pursuit of a superintendent for you until you worked to become more cohesive and united with one another. Was their observation of your board unhealth racist as you claim that my same observation and concern was? When I offered to work with you as a trained facilitator, I was told that the offer was quote racist trope. I don't believe that this is an inclusive way to lead, judging who's in and who's out. It goes against your very principles. I'm very concerned with how our board members engage with each other and with the public. I want all seven of you to shine in your strengths and your qualities and in the unique perspectives that you each truly bring to our community. You have an amazing opportunity here, and if you don't take it, I'll be so very concerned for our kids. I want to hear and respect all of your ideas and values. At the same time, you as our elected representatives should want to hear and respect the ideas and values of the 16,000 children and their families that you seven represent. So tonight I ask for dialogue to be maintained, 4J values to be upheld by the way that you communicate. And please define these terms so that we can all work towards upholding 4J's values and beliefs. You have a whole community here that wants to work towards the good of all of our children, myself included. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was Amanda Voss. And beginning now will be Auden Flynn. Auden?
Uh, my name is Auden Flynn, and I'm a junior at South Eugene High School. I've come to talk to you today on behalf of myself and my peers at South and across the district about mental health and suicide prevention. During the 2021 to 22 school year, I know of two students at South who have ended their lives. I think we can all agree that any number greater than zero is too much. Last year, the district created a suicide prevention coordinator position. I talked with the suicide prevention coordinator a few weeks ago and asked her what steps were being taken to prevent suicide and achieve adequate mental health support for all students. To my knowledge, there have been suicide prevention screenings put out as well as some training for teachers. I'm glad there's progress being made toward protecting the lives of students, but change isn't happening fast enough and we need to do more. This fall, one of my friends was struggling with suicidal thoughts during the school day, so she went to see her counselor. The counselor had appointments that day, so my friend was told that she would have to wait for three hours to be able to see her counselor. After being told this, she left. When students come to the counseling department for mental health support, that's something that they, that needs to be available to them. I can't speak for all schools in the district, but at South, there are only three counselors for 1,200 sophomores, juniors, and seniors. These counselors have a strong focus on academic counseling. Each high school in the district should have at least six counselors. Ideally, the additional ones will be trained mental health professionals who can offer support to students at any time. I believe this will make students more comfortable going to the counseling department and seeking mental health support in general. There are models that 4J can look up, look to in our community that are succeeding in providing support, such as the U of O, which has a three-tiered system for mental health access. If a student there has a serious mental health crisis, there will be someone there for, there for them at their moment of crisis. Another issue that contributes to stress in our high schools is inequitably grading practices. While some teachers accept late work with no penalty, the majority of teachers at South do not. The publication by the Oregon Department of Education titled "Addressing Grades and Credit Options: Clarifying Roles, Restating Guidance, and Reinforcing Equitable Practices" states that "Research demonstrates that allowing for late work, retakes, and revisions not only demonstrates flexibility and responsiveness, but it also encourages learning rather than focusing only on the grade." It also states that assigning a score of zero to work that is late, missed, or incomplete doesn't actually depict learning. The Ben Lepine School District understands this, and they have a district-wide no-zero policy. I know there's a district-wide policy in 4J that allows all late work within a unit to be turned in, but many of my teachers don't follow this policy. I would like to see equitable grading practices for all students across the district. This would benefit students' mental health as they will be able to truly demonstrate their understanding of material without having to worry about timelines that might not match with when they learn the material. Is this world stressful for all of us? Absolutely. Is it stressful to be a high school student? Absolutely. Do we lack adequate mental health resources? Absolutely. Do inequitable grading practices exacerbate stress? Absolutely. Does stress lead to mental health crisis in teens? Absolutely. Is there a suicide problem with teens in the 4J School District? Absolutely. Are students going to continue to be deprived of the support they deserve? That's up to you, but I hope you decide to help us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We now have Jim Misty Frost. Three other speakers, Angie Morrell, Justice Zink, and Lauren Butler are not in the audience, may not have been able to connect. They can contact the board secretary. Or we will move on. Jim Jagger.
Thank you very much. First of all, I'm here to support the revision of your policy to exclude concealed weapons from district grounds. Secondly, and this is kind of an add-on, I'm a South Eugene graduate. Let me tell you, I was a shout out to the two South Eugene students right now that testified. We were just as involved with the community when I was in school, and that was a couple of years ago. Okay? But, but I really am so proud that, that my South people are still in there fighting and getting involved in the community. That's wonderful. The reason I'm here, I, I'm a retired attorney. I was the senior attorney in the DA's office early 70s, involved with various things involving guns. I'm very, I've been shot at during investigations. I understand how tensions can rise and, and terrible unforgivable things occur. The, and you just, you just cannot mix weapons with where tensions can occur. Even back May 18th, your meeting before, I'm sure the people who arrived didn't think they were going to be raising their voices and having some tension, but that occurred. And you can't mix tensions with weapons anymore than you can mix fire with gasoline. You just simply can't do it. The Vivaldi Tulsa, Oklahoma, today, four people were shot in a hospital, a place where people are being cared for. Can't happen. From those, though, I want to present to you the issue I see, and that is from these things in the news all the time, is children know what's going on and they're frightened. The, the reason we need this revision are threefold. One is safety. There's nothing that shows that having weapons or concealed weapons on a premises stops gun violence. There were two guns at Columbine, one at Umpqua Community. None of that saved any kind of a situation like that. It simply doesn't do it. Studies show it does not help. There's no benefit by allowing those to happen. The second thing is this, concealed weapon people are not immune then to depression, suicides, et cetera. And giving them a free pass to get a weapon on a premises when they're suffering for some kind of depression is simply a free gift to getting a weapon on a district where they can do harm to themselves and others. Second issue, we need to encourage people to be involved with school boards, schools, et cetera. And many people are intimidated by thinking that there may be a weapon on the premises. We're here to encourage participation, not to discourage it. So that's an additional reason. The third one, I have seven grandchildren. My, my grandchildren know about this issue with respect to weapons. And when I take them to school and they look me in the eye and they say, grandpa, are there weapons? Are people going to be carrying weapons at the school? The current policy is I can say, I don't know. Some people may have them hidden because they have a right to do that. And imagine the fear that those children have in their eyes, my grandchildren, knowing that it's not the policy that there are no weapons on premises. We change this. I can now look at my grandchildren and say, there's a rule that there are no weapons at all. And that's going to alleviate some of the stress that my grandchildren feel. So there are many, many reasons why that should occur. Let's think of the children first. And let's adopt that revision, which makes things more safe and lessens the traumatization of our children. Thanks for your attention. Good luck. You guys all do a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We now have Misty Frost. Ms. Frost?
Hi, um, good evening, 4J board members, school staff, students, teachers, and fellow community members. My name is Misty Frost. I'm a mother of a student in a school in this district. I work for the COVID information hotline for the state. I am a community organizer and board member at River Road Community Organization. And I am not a mental health expert or a doctor. The following comments reflect my own opinion and not of those of my employer or any groups I'm affiliated with. I want to invite you all to join me in having a deep breath. Now for a metaphor. We're all experiencing a bad case of mercury retrograde. For those of you who don't know what that is, is when the planet mercury looks like it's moving backward from our earthly perspective. Mercury rules over communication. So when it's retrograde, we all experience hiccups in communication. Things like missed appointments, misunderstandings, missed flights to Mexico, occasional butt dial to the X. And we have to be mindful of what we say and double check our words before hitting send. Mercury retrograde also brings back issues we haven't properly dealt with or learned our lesson from yet. So we got a weird sense of deja vu. And that's where we're at today. Yet again, our media dominates with the loss of lives and gun violence. Deep breaths. We're all feeling this, right? Varying levels of sadness, depression, mourning, frustration, confusion, helplessness, exhaustion, rage, stop. We're all experiencing various levels and degrees of trauma. We're all needing therapy, right? Not more guns, emotional regulation, and effective communication, not pointing the finger who is to blame. Mindfulness in the present moment, taking action, not black and white thinking, or fear of what's to come. I'm calling this district and all who might have a say to please implement mental health into our curriculums in our schools, starting in preschool and every grade. I'm not suggesting teachers to become our therapists, but let's face it, many of them already provide this service. Providing training and curriculum for our schools, our teachers will only benefit them. The specific therapy that I'm talking about is called dialectical behavior therapy. Just Google it. DBT is effective and teaches a specific skill set, like the STOP skill. Using acronyms, they are easy to follow and easy to use. Just like math class, we have specific formulas to learn to get the right answer. DBT classes would provide formulas for emotional regulation. And my daughter is in middle school and she's taking it upon herself to provide peer suicide support. And although that brings me a lot of um, pride, I'm also very ashamed that we adults have brought it to this, that our children have to take it upon themselves to provide this, that we should be providing to them. So humbly, I, I thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. So I don't think any of the other people that signed up are here. Carrie, tell me if I'm wrong.
We have gained a speaker. Angie Morrell will be coming in as a panelist just now. And we're looking, we're last chance for the last two, and then we'll move on. Thank you.
I'm sorry, when it was connecting, is it my turn to speak now? Thank you. Good evening. My name's Dr. Angie Morrell. And until recently, I was the uh, program director for the natives program for 4J. For five and a half years, I was the Indian Education Director for Portland Public Schools. And I have also served for eight years on the um, Oregon Department of Education, American Indian, Alaskan Native State Advisory Council. And I'm the tribal, uh, I'm the chairperson of the Tribal Advisory Council for the University of Oregon Subsequela Teaching Program. So I'm a expert in Indian education and deeply invested in equity for our students. What I came here to say is just that um, that the students and families in 4J, the native students and families, there's hundreds of them, are not being served. I resigned earlier this month. And I really never got a chance to get started. But you have an opportunity uh, in 4J and as the board members to um, restructure an incredibly dysfunctional program. For example, uh, during the COVID, there's so much money available, as we had heard earlier from the superintendent. Um, and none of it really has been spent on the students in 4J. Many communities have pivoted. We've sent home lots of crafts and books and gotten tutoring to serve the academic and cultural needs of our students. And that just hasn't happened here. When I was looking at the budget in March, they'd spent around 20,000 of $300,000 of federal funds. That's not okay. That's a real problem. Because as you probably know, our native students, um, they don't, they don't succeed in schools as easily as some other students. It's not because they're not smart. It's just because of, uh, you know, inequities and violence for them in the schools. And so because there is no functional director of the program. And because what has been in place for the last almost 30 years with the Joe and Brenda Brainard isn't really up to date, I just want to give you all the opportunity to look closely at this program to think about putting it under diversity and inclusion, uh, instead of under Teresa Martindale and Andy Dye. And to really think about how to use the funds available, if they are still available, to serve the students, the native students and families in 4J. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that was the final person we have here who was uh, signed up to speak tonight.
Great. Thank you, everyone. So we have two employee groups that I'm aware that I, I was told are ready to speak. We have someone from OSEA here tonight. Is that Sheila or someone else?
We have Seth Faflin from MAPS and Sheila Wagoner from OSEA.
Great. Well, let's call up Sheila if she's available, and then we'll call up Seth. Hi Sheila, don't forget to unmute.
Oh, there we go. Gosh, my screen changed to many faces here. So um, uh, anyway, um, good evening and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Sheila Wagoner, and I am the Oregon School Employees Association Eugene Chapter One President. I also sit on the OSEA State Executive Board and our local AFL-CIO, Lane County Labor Chapter Executive Board. So I know how difficult um, boards can be when they are not complete. And may I say that it is nice to see a full board again. Um, but I want to get on to uh, speaking to about another issue, and that is the difficulties that our classified employees face in working at 4J School District. So you heard a little bit from Georgie Anne tonight. And uh, she had some good stories, well, not good stories, but she had stories to relay pertinent information. And um, you've heard those stories. You've also heard stories from uh, when we had speakers come to the 4J Budget Committee meetings. Even Superintendent Vanderkarr spoke earlier this year about crisis levels of some of our classified positions. These were school bus drivers, custodians, EAs, food service workers. And coincidentally, these And coincidentally, these are part of our 4J family that worked through COVID to help our students in this district. There are also areas where, these are also the areas where we have limited subs and classified folks experience burnout too, and really need to be able to take time off. So we need to, we need, the district needs to get some more subs going. I heard tonight, right before this meeting, about a couple of classified employees that have worked for the district for years, who are now considering leaving because they can't afford to work here, and they don't feel respected. I know employees that are working two and three jobs to try to make ends meet. And earlier this year, in a survey that we had put out, we learned that 10% of those that were surveyed had food insecurities. This is of our classified employees. And 14% were dealing with homelessness issues. So you all are the ones that are going to finalize or approve the budget. Please keep in mind, when you're going over the budget, that OSEA has not even started negotiating. We put in a demand bargain in late October of last year, which wasn't acknowledged until February. And we waited for three months to hear back from the district regarding our request for information that was sent in January. We did finally get an email just recently to set a date for the ground rules of bargaining. So not really feeling the respect there with all these delays. If this district wants to retain and recruit good employees, they need to pay a living wage. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheila. And now I think we have Seth from MAPS.
Yes. Good evening, Board Chair Newman, School Board Members, and Superintendent Vandecar. My name is Seth Faflin, and I am the incoming president of MAPS. MAPS stands for Managers, Administrators, Professionals, and Supervisors. And I'd like to take a little shout out off script here for what Sheila was saying and honoring our classified employees. And I appreciate that we are about to start bargaining with them and hope we can make a difference for them and their conditions. Back to script. Tonight, I'd really like to honor our MAPS retirees, as well as Peter Trauma, our current MAPS president. Many of you know Peter. He is moving to the East Coast to be closer to family. We have so many staff in our district who will miss him greatly. Peter has been the dynamic principal of Spencer Butte most recently, and was previously the principal of North Eugene High School, Madison Middle School, as well as Director of Technology in 4J. I personally have learned so much from Peter over the years, and I still remember advice he gave when I was in my first year as an administrator. When you want to improve systems and efficiency, start by asking the staff who are actually doing the work on the front lines. They know the needs, the current systems, and they usually have great ideas for how things could be improved. When MAPS supervisors start with listening to our licensed and classified employees, we create the opportunity for inclusive decision-making, ongoing collaboration, and a sense of community where we are all in this together. If you are a 4J employee who is listening tonight and you have ideas for improvements for our systems, please reach out to your MAPS supervisors. We would like to hear from you. Our current MAPS, EEA, and OSEA retirees are now in their final month of employment with Eugene School District. June is always a push, a very long push to finish everything before summer, and our teachers and MAPS employees are putting in incredibly long hours to wrap things up. Please join me in thanking all our retirees for their years of dedication to students and staff in 4J. We wish them many wonderful years ahead, along with some upcoming summer fun. Just hang on a little bit longer. Finally, MAPS would like to thank all 4J staff for their work during another difficult pandemic year. The most recent COVID wave this spring has been an unexpected added stress with staffing and many of you covering extra duties. We recognize that, and we hope you all have a safe, healthy, and relaxing summer. You deserve it. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. I don't believe we have anyone here from EEA. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, then we'll move on to reports from individual board members. So I don't know who would like to go first tonight. Gordon. Gordon, go ahead.
Thank you. There's a few things I want to touch on tonight, some of them hard. I feel like I can't I can't start without acknowledging the loss of another student who took their own life last week. My heart goes out to the family of Dorian Joshua Mills. I have no idea what to say to that person, to their family, whose anguish I can't guess at, to my own kid and other students who have lived through this year, watching people they know take their own lives, to parents like me who are scared to death about our own kids. This is obviously not a political issue. Nobody feels this more urgently than somebody else, and there's not different sides of this issue. But for as long as we've said this is the most important thing, and the creating connection and a feeling of engagement for kids is a top priority above academics, our system's not really set up to operate that way. And one of the reasons is that everything is siloed. I don't know what the answer is, but I hope that in the fall, we can have a task force. And I know that's usually a word that means nothing is going to happen, but a task force that we would put money behind, that brings together schools, counselors, psychologists, teachers, parents, students, and administrators to figure out the best things we can do to address this. Obviously, we need more counselors, as the student from South articulated. But we also need more, we may also need more art and music, more breaks, more equitable grading. We have to figure out what we can do differently, not just to care for people when they're really on the edge, but also to reduce the daily stress that gets people there. So I hope we can tackle that in a really coordinated and concerted way in the coming year. It feels like I should say nothing else because it feels kind of obscene to put anything else in the same category as that, but I'll go on to some other things. On curriculum adoption, I was able to meet and I thank Eric Anderson and the, I think, six different TOSs who took time to meet with me and explain things. And I'm impressed by that. I continue to want to make sure that teachers are also able to add their own materials, and they bring their own creativity, and that we don't end up in a system of uniformity, and I'll talk more about that when we address that. I'm looking forward to putting into the budget that we will have three more, that we will have three elementary school librarians next year that I and other people have talked about for a long time. We haven't had elementary school librarians for decades, and the proposal now is to put in three for five years with $20,000 to evaluate it before and after. The superintendent has said that the first two years, there's ESER money available to pay for that, and we'll figure that after that. And I would just note one connection. When I asked the curriculum adoption team about elementary school reading, what they thought, you know, whether they thought it would be an impact to have elementary school librarians, they were uniformly enthusiastic and said it would be a tremendous boost to teaching literacy and to supporting the new ELA curriculum. I want to say a thing about the classified employee situations that was described both by Georgianne Jones and by Sheila Wagoner. I recently learned that Catherine Tagworker, the woman who we celebrated tonight as Employee of the Year, whose principal said of her, quote, "There isn't a single person in our school community who does not respect her." This treasure of a person who we rely on for so much, after 35 years of working for our district, makes just over $20 an hour, that we have staff living in the poverty conditions that Sheila and do that in the upcoming negotiations with OSEA. Two last things, one heavy, one less. The Camus Ridge School, which has not yet been completed, and we've talked about a lot. I don't, I don't pretend to know what the answer is to the Texas shooting and to school security, but our current design that takes away doors to the outside and adds windows to the inside seems to me like the wrong direction to go to. The best practice for school security in an active shooter by Homeland Security, FBI, FEMA, everybody is to, is your first option to get out as quickly as you can. In our schools that have outside doors, our active shooter drills now are always to have kids leave via those doors. So, you know, I don't know that this is the key thing, but it, to me, it seems to get rid of those doors and to add an internal window. So like, God forbid, there's an internal shooter, they can see into all the classrooms, is not going in the right direction. So I and some other board members have just asked to figure out what the cost would be if we were to change that part of the Camus plan. Last thing, this is Pride Month, and I just want to say how proud I am of the queer students and staff in our schools who have the courage to live their full selves out loud and who make our community richer by doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to go next? Maya.
I have decided to put aside my previously prepared statement to honor the need for mourning. My story for you today, to follow the pattern of others before me, is one that has become all too familiar. The ping of a text interrupting a joyful after-school reunion with my 4J student daughter and my 4J teacher husband. I opened my phone expecting a text from my son, but instead, on my phone appears the face of a young person, and I noticed that they have recently died by suicide. Cue tears and visceral devastation. This is a small community, and because my husband has been a teacher in this community for decades, the faces of a child who had been in my husband's class years ago. This is the second time a text announcing the death by suicide of a former student has arrived since the start of 2022. Children who have been schoolmates of my own son, children whose faces, voices, and personalities I know from years of volunteering. But here's the thing, even if none of us in my family knew these children, even if they hadn't deeply impacted my husband as students, there are too many others in our community who are opening their phones to the same devastating news. We actually don't need to know these children personally to be devastated. We just need to care. They were children in pain who are no longer with us, except in memory. So at the risk of delaying my congratulations to retirees, to staff and students who have been awarded remarkable accolades, I'll be keeping my focus on the lives that have been taken. I know the world can't stop, and business must still be conducted, and we have to move forward. But frankly, the world should stop, at least for a moment. So for the few minutes I have allocated to my state, to my statement, I am hitting pause. While our national attention has been focused on recent massacres, and rightly so, it bears repeating that we are continuing to face a local crisis that is also costing us beloved local community members. The suicide cluster that is rapidly expanding in Lain County is heartbreaking, and like a massacre, it forever alters the fabric of our community. In just the past week, we have lost a suicide, another beloved parent, as well as another cherished student from the South Region. In just the past few months, we have lost so many here in Lain County, and specifically in 4J, that I fear we will begin to become desensitized to these losses. So for that reason, I'm going to sit firmly in my feelings, in my heartache, as an act of refusal. I will not allow myself to not be devastated by every single loss. Our collective heart must continue to feel broken so we can be propelled to significantly curb, or ideally stop, the trajectory of the ever-increasing number of deaths by suicide. I know there are things we can do as district leaders. There are things we have already started. My go-to is usually to spring into fix-it mode, but today, I'm not jumping into that. Today, I'm just sitting here with profound sadness, acknowledging the holes left, and mourning alongside families, friends, classmates, staff members, neighbors, our whole community.
What board member would like to go next? Michelle.
Yeah, I don't really have much to say. I am feeling the weight of all the comments that were shared today. And I had a personal loss last week, so there's not much I can add. Thanks.
Thank you. Really sorry. Didn't know. Alicia.
Thanks, Judy. Thanks for sharing, Maya. Thank you for that concept of sitting with that pain, that loss. Yeah. Need to give it a minute before I tell you about my trip to Ridgeline Montessori. It was joyful in a very difficult week. It was part of my job, as my position on the starting to apologize. Give me a second. Anyhow, I got a chance to go visit and meet the students and spend time in the classroom, which is always very joyful and reminds me why I come to all these board meetings. I got a chance to meet the staff and a couple of their board members, which, you know, I so appreciate because they take such pride in the school. We'll tell you, if you go to Ridgeline Montessori, don't forget to look up because they have a beautiful new roof and an HVAC system, which I know the board member who I said, look at, wow, that must be new, had advocated strongly for it. She was very happy someone noticed it. So take a look at that. I want to thank the staff, like my fellow board members did around the curriculum. And I really appreciate that they trekked on down to the, to the main office with, with some items because I know they know how hard it is for me to get around Bailey Hill right now, around access, and they, and they brought it to me. So appreciate it. It was always great to hear from our high school students. I will miss them through the summer. I'm glad we're going to get at least one more week with some of them. We'll miss them through the summer and know that we may change how we do that. And I'm hoping that we could maybe have some conversation about that so we're good to go at the beginning of the year and don't have the same confusion we had, we had this year. So it's going to put that out to everybody. Again, thank you, Gordon, Maya, Michelle, folks. Just having a sit for a moment with all of that sadness and loss. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Laurel.
I've been trying to feel, feel out where I should start. I'm going to start with my love for librarians. I want to feel a little bit happy. With the talk of reading curriculum, it seems to be in the vacuum of this kind of hard sell we're getting for this curriculum and how much everybody likes it, and it's all coming at us. And I appreciate the research. But it feels like it's a bit in a vacuum because, and when decisions are made in a vacuum, things are missed, meaning I went to 4J schools. I remember my librarians. I see how now I see, being in this role, how they were a great support to my educators. They encouraged my love for reading. The removal of librarian, librarians from our grade school correlates with the district's reduction in reading scores. There are value. They're necessary. They're of value. They're necessary. If we are going to be looking at reading and the scores and what's important around that, not that I care that much around testing. I care about a kid finding that book that makes them want to read five more of them because we all remember that that book that made us go, "Maybe this isn't so bad." And it was my librarian who handed me the Phantom Toll Book when I was in, I think, third or fourth grade in Mrs. Bowers' class at Condon, and I loved it. I want them back in our schools. I think it's a whole system. Yes, curriculum. Yes, librarians, less, yes, to more support for educators who are carrying the heavy, heavy load with this, along with their support staff. More to all of that. Yes, I know it costs money, but I want to look where I want more knowledge of where the money goes and how we can get it to where it needs to go, as opposed to being spoon-fed what already should be happening, and then us not really having the knowledge to make vast differences. Though we want them and we talked about them. And that brings me to my second subject, which is our mental health supports. We asked for them in March, in April, in May. They're not complete. Most of what we asked for and decided on as a board, I have heard nothing, not one more thing about a committee. I heard about I heard about this young life from my phone, not from my superintendent. And I know there's rules, but I get calls about things happening in schools that I'm like, "I'm not sure I should be knowing all these personal informations about staff members." But it's sad to kind of mitigate what that knowledge means and when it hits us. I want a new system for this. I want us to be not just this business of educating students, but we have students with us for so many hours a day. We are part of their lives, and we have the power to vastly make a difference, to be that voice when everything seems lost, to support families that need more support. I know there's a lot going on, but I don't want to simplify it just to, "Oh, we can't." I want to simplify it to, "We can." When I asked I asked for for a zero tolerance policy, knowing that's not really possible, but we would do everything because this is just, this is it right here. This is it. The mental health support is the biggest thing we're missing, and it's it's not working, and it correlates with the way we discipline and what we're doing with our students in so many levels, and we can do it better. And I want that to be our number one goal as a board next year because it's massive, and I don't want 10 goals either because it's impossible to do 10 goals. And I want our zero tolerance policy, and for when that child reaches their handout, there's somebody on the other end. I'm sorry, I don't remember the student's name, but he said it so beautifully earlier, saying there could be a three-tier system, but not exactly like the UVO, but a system that we can put in place and fund and support and make that happen. When we get to it for the budget, I'm going to ask about how we amend budgets and what that looks like because I don't understand all of that. So and if Andrea could explain that part of it because I don't, I'm not happy with the budget as it is, but I want to support the work that's happened so far. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Sort of hard to move on to do business as usual, but we do have an agenda to follow. So we're at the consent.
Maybe we do a moment?
Yes, that would be
for this life.
How about we take two minutes of silence to do that? Can move on with our agenda if one could put their screens back on. Thank you. So we have the consent agenda. First, we have eight items remaining on the consent agenda. Do we have a motion? Maya.
Do we, is eight the amount with the item Gordon pulled from the?
Moved item five, and there's eight left on the agenda, on the consent agenda.
I moved to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item five.
Do I have a second, Alicia? So Maya's moved and Alicia's seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. The motion passes with six affirmative votes unanimously. Thank you. The next item I was going to talk about that we added to the agenda is an item for information, and Maya, you can chime in on this one with me. We sent an email shortly before the meeting with a summary of next steps for this interim superintendent's evaluation. And in this, I attached two documents. One includes the goals, the interim superintendent we talked about. It was in we did this initially in late November. I think we passed, we approved it in December at our December first meeting. And we have, the document has the goals that are associated with our Vision 2020, which include educational excellence with equitable access and outcomes for every student. We have multiple pathways to student success, communication and connection with the community. We have diverse world-class workforce, stable, sustainable stewardship. And in addition, interim superintendent Vanderkar identified, oh, an administrative performance, sorry. And in addition, Superintendent Vanderkar added there were four goals that we approved, maintaining and communicating a balanced budget, keeping school bond projects moving forward on schedule, support 4J students, families, and staff, and strengthening and expanding the district's equity workforce. So there's more detail under those on that document that we can also upload in Board Book. The second attachment was the process that we had approved previously. And we are late, and that has a lot to do with not getting these on the schedule, but we've had a lot of pressing other things that have superseded, and that has been a conversation at Leadership throughout the year about this moving things down the road, and we are here. So any comments? I see Laurel's hands up.
I'm trying to understand why this isn't an item for action, seeing as though I just wanted an agreement that we were all going to do this.
Yes, I'm just explaining what the process was. As you said, we got it at the last minute. So we had already approved the process. So what we're going to ask for is board members to submit comments on the goals, and you can see on the form, it has strengths and areas to improve and for each one of the items. And in talking it over with Maya, we have done this in the past at 4J, the comments get submitted to a, an independent person who will put them together in a document the board would would see. And the last thing I want to just say is that in my email, I said to our two new board members, Michelle, you're here, and Kirti, that you are very welcome if you have feedback. But given you're very new on the board, you may choose to not respond to some of the items. I mean, that's going to be up to you, what you feel you have information to respond to. So.
So again, it seems like it would be an item for action since we're going to execute this, and I've just heard about it today. I believe the email came late. I didn't get to read the whole thing because I was at work and came to our executive session directly from work. So I would like an agreement from the board to do it this way. And I would like to know if other people have got to read the entire thing, if they're in agreement with this. And if so, how are we choosing the person who is the independent third party? Because one thing I know about independent third parties that one person gets to choose is most of the time they're not independent. So they need to be, the board needs to choose this person. So all these things seem to be in the air and unknown. And I would like that to be a known thing. And also, I would like to know if Cindy is in agreement with this, since this was something that's supposed to be done, finished yesterday. I mean, this is part of our contract and is very important.
So I see other hands up. We have Maya.
So my understanding, having looked at the contract, is that, and I don't have it in front of me, but the language reads something like it needs to happen by May 31st or as close to that date as possible. So we still are technically within the parameters of the contract in terms of timing. But you're right, Laurel, it's something that should happen very soon. I think that, and I just want to make sure I'm hearing, like, so the two things I'm hearing from you is that you would like us to recommit to this process as it is currently proposed, since there are some changes. And number two is you would like to have an agreement on how that third-party compiler, I know that's not the right word, but will be selected. Is that, is that, I don't want to miss anything, but I think that's like the two jests of what you just said. Is that right? I'm just trying to keep, okay.
I mean, we have, we have responsibilities as a board to complete contract items, and it's and I do not agree that this is some, Judy was saying this is something that could just not happen. And I think that is not appropriate, and and we have responsibilities, and we should execute them.
So to follow up regarding the independent, what is the word? Compiler does not seem right, but let's just go with it, unless somebody has a better, fancier word for me. Is it agreeable to leave that to Judy and me to decide together? Or is this something that you would like to see names proposed? I'm thinking mostly in terms of the need and desire to minimize how many we have to meet during this process. So if it's okay that Judy and I find that person and choose them, then I would add that to the proposal.
I would like to know who it is. I would like to know who's doing this because
Right. I don't, I don't
it wasn't going to happen, and now all of a sudden this came out at the last minute, and now and now we're going to have a independent third party, which in Eugene is pretty much non-existent. So I want to make sure we all are aware who it is, and we've agreed on it and voted on it because that's important. And I would imagine, since this is being put forward, that some thought has been put into this. So maybe we have some names right now we can talk about.
So you're not amenable to Judy and I selecting somebody. You want the names brought forward and voted on?
Yes, I would like, and I'm saying if this is being brought forward as something for us to do, shouldn't this be, shouldn't there be names already that are thought of, considering we're in the last month?
Well, then here we are, right? So looking forward is what we have to do at this point, right?
I did, I was told that there are people who do this, and I don't have the names of them. That wouldn't be, they wouldn't live in this community necessarily. So we could, I mean, Maya and I could confer, and we could email them, and maybe if there's any objection, we could then bring them back to the meeting and vote on it. With that.
Or as you've done in the past, give the information to everybody, and then we say something just to you and Maya.
Okay. Gordon.
Thanks. I just have a couple of questions. So one is, I want to make sure I understand the process is that once the impartial third party, basically, everybody sends in feedback, that person compiles it and then presents it back to the board, who ultimately does the evaluation. It's not that that person is doing the evaluation. We're just asking them to compile the stuff that everybody sends in. Is that right?
Correct. That's correct. And we meet then in executive session to go over that compilation.
Okay, so I also, I'm glad we're doing this. I think it's important we do it. I don't remember that we voted to do this exact process before. It's possible that we exactly did. I don't remember. And I do know that it was unclear if this was going to happen recently. So if we haven't voted this exactly, then I think it would be good to vote it. And the thing of everybody having you know, if Maya and Judy bring some recommendations of possible people on the boards, seize them and okay is one. That seems good to me. And like, for good or bad, we have a lot of meetings coming up, so maybe we can add this to one of the, even one of the executive sessions that we're already planning. Thanks.
Alicia.
So I'll tell you that in the past, usually it's the chair, and there's about three or four meetings prepping for an evaluation. And in the past, we did use a person that wrote it. It was unique. It was different. And I'm just wondering not to push, but you know, we've got a big agenda. So could we do something like without a So could we do something like without objection, we move this forward as outlined in the email with the change that whoever you pick or the names come back to the board for input. Cause I think on the email, you said Maya was going to pick the person. I could be wrong.
I put Maya and I together would get names.
I missed the I, I thought it was just Maya, I was going to make her do that. But anyway, I'm just wondering if we can just do it without objection. I don't care if we vote according to what you put in the email. As outlined in the email, if everybody's okay with that. So I guess I'll make that motion. I know we're not in, I'm just trying to, I think we're in agreement and I'm just wanting to be done before midnight.
Because Maya, did you have something you want to add?
I just, I'm, I, I agree that that can be a course of action to come to an agreement, but I just want to make sure that we are in agreement. Cause the email says that Judy and I will find that person. And, and I'm hearing from Laurel that, that she would like to be part of that process, even if it's just to hear about them and vote on them. So I'm, before we go to the without, without objection, maybe we can just, if anybody else wants to speak up and
When I did my without objection, I changed that, but maybe I can't do it that way because now we need a motion. But I did change it that you guys would bring the names back.
Okay, I'm sorry.
It's okay, it's okay. I, it's, yeah.
Well, in that case, then can we say, does anybody object to doing the without objection approach?
If you do object, raise your hand and Michelle.
I do not object.
Thank you.
I don't know what that means, that this, is this part of Robert's rules? Cause I've never heard of this. This isn't a, we haven't made a motion or, or said anything.
I think that that's what Alicia did, but let's see, we have Superintendent Vanderkay's hand up.
So Laurel asked when she was speaking if I agree to this and I do not. But I'm not sure that my opinion answer her question.
Any comments? Michelle, you have your hand up and so does Maya.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not clear. Are you, Sydney, do you do you object to the compiler? To, to the, I don't, I don't, I'm not clear. I object to the process because if I'm going to be marked down, I should have been given an opportunity to fix my behavior and I've not been giving any feedback over time, so. Not by the group, not by the board, not by majority of the board.
Maya.
So is there a different process that you would prefer Sydney, or are you suggesting not being evaluated altogether?
I learned about this a little bit before five and I really haven't had a chance to like think it through. So I, I don't even think I can answer your question, Maya.
So we could postpone this to our June 22nd meeting or June 8th meeting, but then time is running out, so.
Is there a motion on the floor? You said you did one, Alicia. So
We, we didn't do a motion, so Gordon's in line with his hand up Laurel and then you, you were in line, so go ahead Gordon.
Well, A, I I think it's important for us to do this, given it's both in contract and in policy. But I guess I was more thinking of your question Laurel, which is, as I understand it, we're like in a slightly weird procedural point, which is that this has come up as an item for information. And, and we, at the same time, we want to kind of have a decision on the record that we're following a certain practice. And as I understand what Alicia's recommendation was that it essentially has the same function as a motion. If we say without objection, does everybody agree that we do the process laid out in the email, except with the change that Judy and Maya will bring proposed compilers back to the board as a whole to decide. And so if everybody says we have no objection to that, then that becomes a board decision on the record, even though it's not a motion because it's not under item for action. That's my understanding of where we're at procedurally and I'm Laurel, if there's something I'm missing that we should do that differently, I'm wide open to, to being corrected, but otherwise that seems like a okay way to go to me.
So could we ask Alicia to restate it or the, with that, is that what you were going to ask Laurel? Were you?
There has to be a motion and then you, then the chair can say if there is no objection, the, the motion will pass. And then that means you don't have to vote. That's how a motion is adopted that way. Just looked it up. Carrie may know more than this, that she's our resident guru on this, but that is how I understand. So we have to have, we have, and have to have an understanding of the motion on the table for us all to say. And then you get to say as chair, if there's no objection, it would stand or something like. If there's no objection, the motion is adopted. That's what you said.
Carrie, did you have something you wanted to add or not? Just unmute if you do and if not, we'll ask Alicia to make the motion.
Judy, I can't make the motion after hearing Sid. I didn't, I, I can't do that. So you're going to have to make a motion because I would object. I would like us to pause and give Sid a chance, a week. We will be back here to take a look at that and maybe come to an agreement and and I think that is the respectful thing to do. In the meantime, I don't think anything stops you from looking for and recruiting a, a writer that you could or couldn't use depending on where we go as a board. But I would like to respect the fact that we heard from our superintendent that she does disagree with getting that evaluation late. And I'd like to check into a few things. So that's where I am. Thanks.
Laurel.
So I would like to go forward because we're late by one day, doesn't mean it should go away. We've had several meetings already. We, there's one part that's missing. She will be getting feedback. She still will be working for the district. So it is absolutely and it gets passed on to her. So I do not agree. And it honestly, I have never heard where it is the employee that says, no, don't tell me how I did. That's not appropriate. I've never, ever heard that. Except if somebody has an agenda to stop the information from coming out and there's no reason to do it in, on the 22nd because that makes it too late.
Point of order, Chair, point of order. Thank you, Christine. Criticism of the superintendent needs to be addressed in an executive session. Thank you.
I don't think I was criticizing anybody. I was saying that it should happen. How is that criticizing?
I think we need to
Nobody gets to talk unless it's said in a certain way that Christine wants and most of the time
I think we have Maya's hand up. Thank you.
So I'm, I'm thinking of how other people are evaluated in this district. And I know, for example, if the teacher is evaluated and doesn't agree with the evaluation, they have the option to not sign said evaluation. Is that I'm, I'm looking at you Alicia as the most experienced person on here, but is that signature a component of the evaluation process?
I think what we have to remember is we actually do Sid's evaluation in public. So we do it in private and then we write something up and we do it in public. So I'm not, no, we do, you, you, it goes to a public. Usually, anyway, it's not important. So I don't, I don't know. I should have just answered your question, Maya. I don't know.
So I'm going to make a proposal to move on. I think that we are going to be meeting on June 8th for sure and possibly before that. In the meantime, Maya and I would, we could, we can look for names that we'll bring forward. So we could do it all at that time because we can't take any action and it gives Superintendent Vanderkay a chance to think about this and consider it. So I think that is, and everyone can read the email I wrote and be a little more informed.
Can I?
Laurel or Maya, Laurel, whoever.
Sorry Laurel, I see you in the block. I, I don't know if Christine is willing to come back on screen, but I'm wondering Christine, if you know that answer to the question of the, of the signature or if there's a space within the process whereby the superintendent can respond. Before we leave this topic, I'm just curious, the answer to those questions as we continue to consider this.
Hi, I'm, I'm not prepared to answer that question at all, so I, we could do some looking into it and, and get back to for sure.
Okay, cause there is Right, there's a spot that I
Sure, there, there is for teachers, but what I, what I can't advise you about is the superintendent evaluation process because I haven't prepared to advise you and I don't know the answer off the top of my head.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
We have Laurel and Gordon.
Um, so what you propose to do, and we have a discussion about it and now you're saying not to do it. Because somebody, because Cindy has asked, she didn't say any direction, so I, I'm really confused and about this. I'm more than willing to wait till the 8th, but I want a lot more work to be done. And so an understanding and where we're going to be at that time because it needs to happen. That's not, that's not an employee's decision in general. And in reality, this should have been done a while ago and it was important enough that it should have been on the schedule and should not have been pushed out. And when I was saying that there was an agenda, I did not mean Cindy. I meant my fellow board members. Thank you.
Gordon.
Thank you. If I understand what you said Judy, I think I would support going in that direction as well, which is essentially for now to proceed the way we would, not every, not people submitting commentary, but you and Maya doing the process of looking for a compiler and, and bringing it back to the board. And a week from now, we can figure out how we want to go forward. I, I feel like we have to do an evaluation. But I'm, I'm open to, you know, if the superintendent comes back to us in a week and says, I have an idea for how I think it could be done in a way that is, that is more fair or something like that. I'm, I'm wide open to that. So I think if we, as long as you guys start that week, we don't lose anything, we can come back in a week. And you know, give the superintendent a chance to come up with proposals of how to do it that we could take or not take at the time. Thanks.
Thank you. Maya, one last, one more comment.
I'm hoping that maybe in the meantime, we can also be advised perhaps on language that, that indicates that this process has been undertaken in a very different way than it has previously to to perhaps address the concerns that Sydney has expressed to us, but also which would still give us the opportunity to do the evaluation, but with that notation. So I know you're not on screen Christine, but I'm, I'm thinking maybe you might have some advice on that one perhaps. Not right now, I get that.
So I think that is another good suggestion. So I think we will follow up with that immediately. So I think we could move on. It sounds like the plan is on the, our next meeting to bring forward names to consult with Superintendent Vanderkay about possible other methods to do this. And talk to our council to see how, you know, about signatures and, and the process that that can happen for a response, which would fit into, is there a way to adapt this? But we'll also bring forward some names that could do the compilation.
And can this, when you say next meeting, I would like a, a time certain.
Well, we hadn't set, it looks like we're meeting on June 8th, so it would be June 8th if we get that established, yes. Okay. So now we are moving on to items for action and the first item for action is English language arts adoption, curriculum, curriculum adoption. And we're inviting Eric Anderson. I know, I don't know who else is joining you.
Good evening School Board and Superintendent Vanderkay. I'm Eric Anderson, Director of Curriculum. And joining me this evening are TOSA leaders Eileen Thomas, Leah Willow, Lynette Williams, Sarah Knutson and Katie Stiles. I'd like to thank all of you that were able to make time in your busy schedules to come see the materials. And we are here to answer any final questions that you may have. Thank you.
So we're opening up to questions, because we, the materials were in the packet and many of us have seen the curriculum and have had a presentation. Laurel has her hand up.
Yes, I I have two questions and one may not be able to be answered. One is when we adopt curriculum, I'd like there to definitely be a way that teachers that have other ways of doing this that are working get to do what they're doing still. I like to support the educator in their work and not the publishing company in that regard. The, the other part is and this is this is in reference because this happens with this group, but it's not you. It's, it's, it's to the whole system in that working board members are not respected and this is not to you. This is to how we do things at the district. And I think it needs to be said because I had no time to do this because it was always during my workday. So I respect that you're working, but I also work. And as a volunteer gig, I can't, I can't just leave my important work to make this work more important all the time. So in the system and how we do it, it's really important to acknowledge that and make time in the evening for volunteer board members to be able to see things. Cause I was very interested and wanted to see it. But there was no possibility. And the emails that came in, I appreciate everybody who took their time and I think it was Sarah Knutson who was trying to to work it out with me and I just couldn't fit it into my schedule and I appreciate that. And I'm hoping that we as a board look at this and make policy around this to be able to say we will do some of these things in the evening when possible. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for the feedback and we can still make time at a later evening event for you to be able to come in and view the materials. We're happy to do that. We'll also take that constructive feedback to heart and with future adoptions. When we have the opportunity, we'll make sure that we schedule time outside of work.
And the, the part about curriculum, is that something that has to be done at a policy level? And is that not appropriate for right now?
I think that would be a discussion for a different time, yes.
Gordon.
Thank you. First, I just want to say again, thanks to Eric Anderson and Sarah and Katie and Eileen, maybe I don't know if maybe everybody on this call took time out of your work to meet with me and explain things to me and and I appreciate it. I, I'm lucky enough to have a faculty job at the U of O where we don't really do anything. So we can come anytime of day to look at stuff. My, you know, as you know, I've, I've talked with all of you about the concern of wanting to have a strong curriculum that that doesn't require teachers to make things up on their own and that that, that doesn't require teachers to make things up on their own and that follows best practices, but that also doesn't, you know, kind of like what Laurel was saying, doesn't take away the ability of teachers who've come up with great things over the years that address the same standards, but in somewhat different ways to be able to do that, that we're not moving towards a, a system of, of uniformity where everybody's doing the same thing in the same way at the same time. So one, here's one question is that I, my understanding is that when we, the language in the, I don't even know where this is, it's not in our resolution, that the, uh, I'm sorry, that the curriculum would be taught with fidelity or something, which the language that we used to have. I, my understanding is that the language now is something like engage with integrity. That means you don't have to do it, like you have to take it seriously, you have to engage with it, you have to try it out. But that, am I right that that's been, that there's been a shift in that?
Um, I can start and other members can join in. The board policy states that adopted materials will be taught with fidelity. What our team has had a lot of conversations about is this idea of teaching to the integrity of the program. The wit and wisdom and arc is not a basal program in the sense of page one, day one. That's not what we're, we're shooting for. It doesn't fit within even the materials that we purchased. There's a lot of teacher flexibility, teacher choice, teachers need to read their students and, and make adjustments daily in their class. And so this idea of teaching to the integrity of the program is maintaining the core ideas, core concepts, the utilizing the materials that are there and using the professional judgment that teachers have, you know, the years of experience that they bring in with the scaffolds and supports, et cetera, but still using the curriculum that has been provided, but teaching it with integrity might, is a different way of framing the conversation than fidelity, which sounds very lockstep. We're not a lockstep district and that's not what we're aiming to do with this.
Okay, so it sounds like basically the answer is yes, except we, the board have policies that are still kind of retrograde in their, in their language, that has the fidelity thing in it. But the intention for this is, I understand this, what you just laid out. I, well, I'll let other people go and then I'll come back to something else.
I've put my hand up in the queue next because I actually have a text from Kirti, who really wanted to be here tonight, but she is at, uh, uh, she's out of town. So she said, please tell the, um, the English lang, the ELA instruction team how much I wanted to be there for this and how impressed I was with their work and effort and enthusiasm. And I'm so looking forward to new learning resources. And also thanks for trying to include, she really wanted to be here tonight to vote, but really wanted to express her enthusiastic support of the curriculum. So I just am channeling her right there. So, Maya.
Um, so I, um, I, I want to express appreciation for that shift in language. I know that there, the intention behind the, the teach with fidelity or implement with fidelity was, was probably coming from a good place, but at this point it has come to, to not be so well received by educators and has a feeling that when something isn't successful, it's then put on the educators as being the reason because they didn't deliver it with fidelity as opposed to maybe a lot of other circumstantial factors that might have contributed to a less successful implementation. So it feels like maybe just language, but the language really is significant for me. I, what I see in that is more flexibility than, I mean, fidelity and integrity are very different things, although they, they feel like close cousins. But what I, what I do appreciate about it is that it also puts on our educators the, the onus of, of critically engaging the materials. And, and I think that, that part to me feels exciting. You, you can't teach it with integrity if you're not paying attention. And, and, and hearing, I'm not sure how to make it official, but hearing, you know, Eric saying that there's going to be moments when something needs to be set aside and that, that that's not going to make everything fall apart as long as you're still looking at the greater curriculum and integrating the components and, and totally botching your words. I apologize. But that gives me a sense of, of security for the folks who, who might not have as, as, as much excitement about the curriculum. And I have to say that there are so many people who are excited. I said it before and I'm going to say it again. I know that families who have dyslexic students, for example, were overjoyed to hear that this is what is being chosen. It's, it's something that they have been waiting for. I've heard teachers who teach students who, when they hear that, are really excited to have a tool. But I, I also just want to, want to make sure that we, that we are not in the process losing something that 4J has been long known for, which is being a space where people are excited to come because they can be creative and they can, um, you know, bring a flavor into their teaching. And, and I'm excited about the whole concept of the science of reading, but not at the exclusive cost of the art of teaching as a general category. And, and I, I believe, you know, with my, it took a little longer than an hour, but with my chance at looking at the materials and specifically looking not just at the materials, but at the teacher's guides, that what is being asked of our teachers is very different than other, other examples that I have seen where teachers are being encouraged to, um, to, to spark creativity amongst their students. And so I appreciate that. I, 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 everybody here at this point knows me and knows that what Gordon is saying is very near and dear to my heart. And I just want to make sure that we aren't, we aren't losing any teachers or crushing any teachers' souls by being overly rigid in the demand of how it's delivered, in the demand of what time of day it's delivered, in the demand of the exact number of minutes on different components. You know, I think about different programs and for some, it's okay to tell them that at 9:17 you need to start. And for others, that can directly compromise the program of the entire school. And, and those are the, those are where I'm concerned and those were where I'm hoping that that concept of engaging with integrity allows for the creative relationship to the curriculum, not just by the teacher, but also by the school community and the programs that they have in place and are very attached to. So I just said a lot. Thank you for listening.
Thanks, Maya. Gordon.
I, I can wait. Alicia hasn't spoken yet.
Right, Alicia.
Well, I don't want to crush anyone's soul. I appreciate that, Maya. That, that is so true. But I did want to say thank you so much to the committee. It was great to be on the committee and see all the work that went into deciding on this and preparing and all the people that piloted it and all of that, all of that work. Really appreciate Bay's comments and Gordon's and Laurel's about, you know, the art of teaching. You guys said it better. I will say that. And that, you know, I see this as, you know, as you change things, you work with your team, you work with your, your administrator and you get the best product for, for your students. So I'm happy and, and I think we probably should change our, our policy at some point to change the word to the cousins word. Maya, what was that? Where'd you go? So anyhow, that being said, I was hoping to make the motion just because I sat through the curriculum advisory committee and, and I don't know if people are ready for that. I don't want to overstep, kind of looking at you, Gordon, because you still have your hand up. Do you want to go first?
And I have one more comment too, and then you can make the motion. Yeah.
We, if ever, I'll wait then. Thank you.
Gordon.
Uh, I actually have an amendment to the motion, so why don't you go, Judy, and then Alicia, if you want to make the motion, then I'll make my amendment.
I just wanted to say that, to speaking, and I, I was lis, listening to Gordon's points and Maya's points and I appreciate the new, the use of language and I agree. If anyone's looking at the policy, we need to maybe make that word change to as IIA. So if you were looking for that, Gordon, but, um, I, I, when I really listened last time when you gave your presentation, when I got to talk to the people that were working on the curriculum, when I read the quotes, there were a lot of very experienced teachers that really piloted this curriculum. And the enthusiasm and excitement was palatable. So I just want to say I'm really listening to the voices of not only new teachers, but experienced teachers too, that have, that really see this curriculum offering lots of possibilities and creativity. And I was so impressed with seeing the diversity in the materials, which we need so desperately. The, the, the stories that are told, that are, that the historical stories, the, the characters used just are really infusing to so much more diversity into our curriculum and accurate teaching and that the integration of some of the historical facts and the science that I think someone brought up in their presentation, all that really speaks to how they're integrating these concepts in a more realistic way too. So those are some of the things that really stood out with a long list of other things as well. But, um, you know, especially teachers that commented that kids that were not learning to read very well before they were picking this up more quickly, and it's really something that you can use for kids with learning disability, you know, with dyslexia. So all that is kudos to, there's so many, this is such a great improvement. So thank you. And I see we have Michelle.
Um, I met with the, the TOSSAs who are here tonight and with Eric in, as part of my orientation. So I had sort of a, um, and a very, um, a very, uh, a, a big plunge into what's happening over in, in your offices. And it was a pleasure meeting all of you. And we, we had a discussion about how included with the reading is also the development of, um, creating arguments and opinions and, um, learning how to navigate discourse. And I find that to be really crucial in these times. And I appreciated the conversation we had around that.
Thank you. Um, you know, I've seen Katie's hand up. Do you have something? I'm going to jump to you there, Katie.
Just two seconds to say, Laurel, I understand the complications of being a working parent and daytime things. It's very tricky. Listening to your board statement at the beginning, I wanted you to know that Phantom Tollbooth is actually taught within the curriculum. So I just felt like we needed to like tell you that because when you finally do get to come see it, I know how excited you'll be. So, thank you.
Uh, Gordon, then Maya, then Alicia.
Well, I, I have a motion with an amendment to make, so maybe I should wait till other people make comments or questions or till Alicia makes her original motion.
Maya.
Um, I, I, I forgot a really important part of this process that I personally appreciated and I just want to draw attention to. I know we've talked about, I think all of us at some point have mentioned how appreciative we are that it was such a large pool of teachers that were working on this together and that is really important. But what I really appreciated is when I went and looked at the materials and poor Sarah is going to twitch every time somebody says Donnie Appleseed because when I went and looked at the materials and something stood out to me as, as concerning, I just saw immediately, hearing that feedback and, and not just like hearing it and being like, okay, sure, but like the wheels turning and thinking of how issues can be addressed because, you know, there's, there's no curriculum that's going to be perfect, none, any, like that's just life. Like there's, there's not a leaf out there that's perfect. And, and what I really appreciated was, and was hearing my concern and, and then seeing it turn into that next step of implementation and, and coming up with ideas about how to make sure that that kind of potentially harmful, you know, material doesn't just like get disminuted and like ignored as being problematic, but can actually turn into a teaching moment. So, um, so I, I appreciate as a board member having felt heard, not just invited, because it's like this checklist of things to do, but because it really felt genuine that, that our perspective was, was sought out. And, and I had that happen, you know, it's been a few meetings now that I've got perspective, which is not, I, I, I'm not an easy sell on the curriculum question. I'm not. And, and I really appreciate that in the, in the course of my interactions, that I, I wasn't just, you know, received as, as something to, to, to say that they had done. So I, I really appreciate that. And I look forward to seeing how the materials that aren't the exciting materials that everyone gets big smiles about and they're more like the, oh yeah, how those are handled and used as teaching moments, not just for our students, but for our teachers.
Thank you. Alicia.
Thanks, Judy. Um, real quick, hey, maybe next time we could all get together and do the curriculum walkthrough? Because I think I would have learned a lot from my fellow board members, just being in the same room with them and what their particular take on things were. So, you know, just a thought, like we could come at five and, and go through that if we wanted to. Anyhow, Gordon, um, instead of me making a motion, I, I'm just going to give it up to you to, to, or if you want to per, tell us what you want to talk about. It gets a little less crazy with the motion, I'm sorry, it gets a little less confusing with the motion and then this and that. So thanks for letting me do that, but I, I don't need to. But I am curious as to what, what your addition is.
Because I teased it a couple of times. So, so it's just my lead in, you know, I also heard a lot of positive things. I'm, I'm not usually, like Maya, I'm not easily sold on curriculum, but I am sold on trusting the judgment of all of the teachers who worked on this all year long and who are specialists in this area, which I am not. Obviously, no one set of materials and no one way of teaching works for all kids all the time, the same way. That can't be true. And, and part of what we want is to encourage teachers' ability to respond to the specific groups of kids who are in front of them, which is, I know is part of what Eric Anderson just said. And that's especially true when we're talking about wanting to reach kids emotionally and socially, as well as academically, and to make kids enjoy reading as well as be able to read. So just, you know, to be clear about the kinds of things that I'm taking up. If a teacher thinks they have a, a great exercise they've developed on Kalapua history in Eugene, or somebody else has a great exercise on taking soil samples to then have kids write about climate change, and they, and they believe that this is going to engage the kids in front of them more effectively than something else while teaching the same standards, I want to make sure that's still possible. So the motion that, that I propose would be to adopt this curriculum with this additional sentence that I hope will be taken as a friendly amendment, but, which is the board supports teachers using their professional judgment to build on this curriculum by drawing in supplemental materials and activities that address the same standards as this curriculum. That's my motion.
Uh, okay, so Gordon has moved and did, was that the official motion? Is that what you were asking him to make? Okay, great. That, uh, Gordon's moved and Laurel, were you raising your hand to second that? Yes, and, and Laurel has seconded. Any discussion? Alicia.
Little less discussion and a question. Um, it, you know, everything makes sense to me, but I'm not in the classroom. And so we want to give clarity, clarity, clarity. That's, that's what's important. And so I'm just looking at the teachers, the TOSS, the people, maybe Eric, you get tagged with this. Does that make? Does that make, is that clear for somebody understanding what that means? And is that clear for people? Cause here's my fear, maybe if I do soil samples in third grade, but that now everybody's doing soil samples in fourth grade. Or you know, something like that. There would be a way for us not to duplicate or take something out. I, I, I just want to make sure. So I've said enough, please answer whatever you feel comfortable answering.
Uh, yeah, I'd be happy to, to jump in on that. I think clarity and being clear for our teachers is really important in this process. And I think earlier on in the presentation, it was asked, is that something we can talk about now? And I said, I think at a later date may be better because we could come more prepared with, when we say, you know, teaching to integrity, what does that mean? Cause that might mean something different to me than it does to, to someone else. Or teaching with integrity to the standards. And one thing I appreciated about Gordon's comment was building on the curriculum, not in replacement of, and I think that's a really important distinction that it would be good for us to have an opportunity to clarify and to have a conversation about. There was a crisis prior to COVID and that was our reading scores in our district. And when you look at students, if you're a parent of a, a migrant student, a student that was homeless, et cetera. You would be outraged. You would not want your student to come into, to 4J. Change needs to happen. And we have done a lot of research and a lot of time and, and 50, 60 teachers have come together and said, this curriculum gives us the best opportunity to have students access high quality materials across the district, no matter what school you're in or where you're at. And it's not an educational lottery of what teacher you land with or what school you're in. So I want to be clear with the intention of the word integrity in that we're still using the core text as, as just that, as our core text in which we're using, but there is flexibility within that. 4J is known for ingenuity and creativity. And the last thing we want to do is stifle that with our teachers. But we feel like in our, in our adoption team feels like that there's room within this curriculum just for that. And you got to hear from teachers at the last board meeting, their creativity and their ingenuity in the classroom, using high quality materials, but still having that inspiration and that art of bringing that together. The modules are long, there's only four across each grade level. It gives a lot of room for teachers to, to bring in great activities. And it also allows us to build a better product. Cause Maya said, there's no one curriculum that we can just purchase and then, you know, wash our hands of and say, we're done. This is going to be a multi-year process to add on, to edit, to shift. So we're going to need expert teachers and people who have, and new teachers who are bringing in great new ideas to add on and, and to provide that feedback. So we can improve the base product that we have. What we're really asking for our teachers to give us a chance, our adoption team believes in it. Our leaders in the district believe in it. And we know that this is a, a big statement in 4J to come together and say, we believe that this is going to make a difference for our kids in the district. We believe that it's not okay that less than 50% of our kids can read to proficiency. So I think we have just such a great opportunity and, and I like the flexibility of integrity over fidelity. I don't want us to get caught in the fidelity trap. And so I do want to work with our teachers and, and I appreciate the flexibility of our school board to be thinking about how they can support teachers to support students. Because in the end, this is all about our kids and we want teachers who are, you know, integral to that process to feel inspired, to love their job, to come every day and, and to do what they do best, which is to spark student learning and have kids love to learn. That's, that's far more important. It's just a curriculum. Getting kids to love to learn is, is the true game. So I'm, I'm right there with you.
Maya.
Well, I, after that, I feel like maybe I don't need to say anything, but I do, the, the part that you picked up on Eric is the part that I picked up on that I appreciate about Gordon's wording, which is, I think he used the word supplement, maybe or in addition, something about not taking away, but adding to. And that was the part about this curriculum that sold me each time I listened to one of you all present to us or else in personal conversations and that, the, the lesson about the, the metaphor versus literal in the heart. For example, I was hearing about how in one classroom, somebody had a student teacher whose parent was a, like an ultrasound tech. And, and they got to talk about like that part of the literal, that's not going to happen. Just because it happens in room 17 in one school doesn't mean it's going to happen in room three in another school. But it also should be explicitly stated that, that it's still doing the curriculum with integrity. If you pull in something that somebody else might not necessarily get. And that's the part that I think this curriculum excites me about. There's room to make it, to make it, to make it, you know, your own, while also be part of the whole 4J project. So I, I like that. I like the way you worded that Gordon, and I feel like it offers teachers that have this concern, cause not everybody does. The reassurance that they can add to it. It just doesn't mean that you can decide, I'm not going to do module two. It means how are you going to make module two look so that, you know, your class knows that this is what happens in room 17? So I, I appreciate that same component.
Gordon.
Thank you. I, I'm trying to put my hand down here. You know, I think to, as I've been thinking about this, it's like, to some extent, there's always going to be, like, I appreciate people needing specificity, but I think, you know, there's always going to be a certain amount of room for interpretation, like saying, okay, we, we changed from fidelity to integrity. Now what exactly does integrity mean? Like, that's a thing that's going to be worked out, you know, in good faith by administrators and to some degree, but between administrators and teachers at each school or, or in the professional development or something like that. But it's not, you know, unless we were going to a direction that I know nobody wants to go of saying, well, if it's Wednesday, June 1st and you're teaching, you're teaching ninth grade geometry, you should be on page 112, doing exercises three through seven, right? If we're not going there, which I don't think anybody wants to go, then there's a certain amount of of fuzziness that feels like maybe it's not the art of teaching, but the art of administering of like how to try to bring out the best in, in a wide diversity of, of teachers and classes. So for, I think that Eric and others know that I came into this thinking like, well, we should have buy these books and like people who want to use them can use them. And people who want to leave them on the shelves can leave them on the shelves and everybody should be able to do what they want. And I've changed that a lot and tried to write this in a way that respects the, the judgment of the team that came up with this. So I just wanted, so I just wanted to read it again, which says, the board supports teachers using their professional judgment to build on this curriculum by drawing in supplemental materials and activities that address the same standards as this curriculum. So it's designed, as far as I am concerned, it's designed to, to do what I think, to just kind of give the boards premature for what I think that we're all aiming at, which is to use this curriculum with integrity, but also to leave room for people adding on things and customizing it to the kids they have. Thanks.
Um, I just want to clarify what you had said, Eric. So I thought what you said was there's already room in this curriculum as it is to supplement. Is, did I hear that correctly? So in a way, the, the amendment is, is that redundant or?
There, there is room within that choice, within the curriculum. Yes. I'm not sure how you would like me to, to respond to that other than it is different than what's in the board policy. And I think that may be what Gordon is attempting to do with adding that to the language. So there's, it doesn't read fidelity, but we do have, I believe it's section four in IIAR that allows for teacher supplemental materials. So there's already a process that outlines what Gordon says around adding supplemental materials that align to the instructional materials adopted by the district that are aligned to those standards. So there's already language in our AR to do what Gordon said, but I don't get to make that decision. So I'm going to step out.
So Gordon, have you read that language?
I have not, but I would support. I would want to make this resolution and have this language in even if, I mean, obviously I'm sure everything that Eric said is true, even if there's substantially similar language. And partly that's because I think it's, you know, we're, we're doing something systematic. And I think it's important for people to know that the board supports this. I think when, when we say, right, we're making a decision for the whole system. And now what is it really going to look like on the ground? Is going to depend a lot on the set of teachers and administrators in each school. People are going to, you know, no matter how much centralized PD and guidance and all that stuff we have, it's going to be different from place to place. And there certainly could be a place where the principal says, oh, the board policy says teach with fidelity. And I, and I think this means that we need to do blah, blah, blah. I'm not casting aspersions on any principal. But for that reason, I think it's important for, for the board to state it. And if it turned out that it was redundant and we just wasted, you know, a 20-word sentence, we've wasted times on less valuable things.
Alicia.
Thanks. Well, I appreciate the conversation because you know, when you use words, put something out, people go back and say, well, what was your real intent? And you know, Maya gave a great example of the supplemental and the art and, and, and really is supplementing it. It may be deep in policy somewhere, but I think what Gordon put forward after the conversation and what I think it means that it's really just kind of following that path, but it's, it's, it's stating it. It's, it's putting it forward. So teachers know that we expect you will use this curriculum and you will bring your creativity to it. Go find a heart surgeon. Um, but, uh, so I, I am, I am prepared to vote and I'm prepared to vote on Gordon's amendment. Not that I don't want to hear more from all of you, but I just wanted to let you know I was prepared.
So can we, Gordon, since you just spoke again, I'm going to go to Laurel and Maya and then, okay, Laurel.
I, I, I appreciate the conversation. I'm, um, my only addition is, um, kind of my social worker heart is that new teacher that we want to encourage and let him develop and figure things out. So providing this curriculum is great. And then also having it in there written as part of what Gordon, like maybe there's another idea. So I, I like encouraging that because that's how you get people invested in teaching and staying and grounded in this amazing work. And I want to support that and encourage people to stay. Cause I hear that we lose people like in the first three years, but what if we kept them? So I like, I think the words are important for that, that the simplicity of saying, yes, and. So I appreciate the work. I appreciate that we've invested so much time in this because I, I have three, three delayed readers. It really delayed and it was really hard, really super hard that I had to read Twilight with my daughter. Cause God, I hated that. But, um, but you, but she loved it and has read it four times. So it's that part where people catch on and keeping the teachers and librarians and, and, and I, I appreciate the addendum and I appreciate the work and I'm excited for the absolute needed change, just the absolute, which you guys have always spoken to. So I want to see those kids love to read.
Alicia, I assume your hand is not still up. So Maya.
So I started this off by being appreciative of the shift in language and I am a total word nerd. I grew up in a trilingual household and words often surprise me because I don't always know what they mean. And the word redundant, I think is, um, one that might not be what you maybe meant Judy. Because I don't think it, we often use it to just mean repeated, but it really means superfluous. It means no longer needed. It means that it can be omitted without shifting the function. And I think that what you also get through repetition, that can happen, but what you also get is clarity. You get reassurance, you get confirmation. And I think that's what we will get by having, you know, the, the messaging that we've gotten from you repeated in our motion and, and in the language that we use to demonstrate our support for you all, because that's ultimately what we want to do is to say, yes, you chose a good curriculum. And part of what we think is great about this curriculum is the room and space that it has for this, this, this pull-in stuff. It's the, it's the extra, it's the edible flowers on top of the salad that you don't necessarily need. But it certainly makes eating your salad that much more delightful and memorable and impactful.
I'm not a word nerd. So there you go. I don't see any more hands up. So maybe it's time to call the question. So since we've been talking a long time, I'm going to ask Gordon to repeat his motion.
So the, the motion would be to approve the, the curriculum with this one additional sentence. The board supports teachers using their professional judgment to build on this curriculum by drawing in supplemental materials and activities that address the same standards as this curriculum.
Okay, that's been moved and Laurel has seconded. So I'm going to call the question. Everyone in favor of the motion as it's read, raise your hand. Uh, okay, I'm seeing that we have six yes votes. So it passes unanimously. Okay, we have a curriculum. Awesome. Thank you all. Go get some rest. Because I know now the work really begins as you order all the materials and start getting them out to teachers and supporting them. So thank you so much. Yeah. Appreciate all your work. Okay, we have another item for action tonight, which is revisions to board policy GBA equal employment opportunity. And we invite Christine Nesbitt up to answer questions, I think, at this point, correct?
Correct, yes. Um, we, I did make an amen, an amendment after understanding that board member O'Rourke was interested in, in making more primary, the designation of an employee to oversee compliance with equal employment opportunity as well as other laws prohibiting discrimination. And so I made that change and to the best of my ability. And I await any questions you have.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Christine about this? Okay, then we are probably ready for a motion. Thank you for making that change. It reads well to me. So appreciate it. Maya.
I move to approve the revisions to board policies, well, to board policy GBA.
Do we have a second? Okay, Maya moved and Laurel seconded. Any discussion? I don't see any hands up. So I'm going to call the vote. All those in favor of, of the motion as it stands, raise your hand. We have the motion, Gordon, was your hand up? I'm sorry, I didn't see. Yeah. Okay. We have the motion passing six yes votes unanimously. All right. Thank you. And now we have several items. Oh, wait. We have another item for action and that is consent agenda item five. Which is approving a resolution, making appropriations resulting from transfers. And I think we'll ask, oh, Andrea's already got her screen on. Thank you.
Good evening. I understand that there is some interest in knowing about what specific projects have been budgeted for the S R three funds under the topic of building improvements. So we have Kyle Tucker and Ryan Spain with us tonight to give you a play by play of what those projects will look like. At least we hope.
Yeah. Good evening, board. I think Gordon had raised the question or asked a question around that. And, and what we have allocated that money, the 3.6 for is HVAC improvements. So it's to allow us to take a look at our systems. Allow us to take a look at our systems and some of our buildings and improve what we can with that kind of. Uh, unfortunately, it's, it's not enough money, uh, but it allows us to do some things that we need to do for, um, air quality.
Any questions? Gordon has his hand up.
Um, thank you, Kyle. I'm sorry for making you stay up late for another board meeting. I, so I'm just, you know, the, the question that I have like is probably obvious, like in another meeting. Next week, we're going to be sitting and talking about Kelly and YG and like, how much money could we scrounge together to. Address them. And so I'm trying to think, is it better to spend money on HVAC or is it better to spend money on that? The problem is I'm not really qualified to think about that question. So. I, I'm not asking you to answer that, but like, how bad is the HVAC problem? Is this something where you feel like, all right? Where, you know, we could have kids breathing all kinds of stuff and we need to fix this. I'm just trying to get some sense of that.
Well, what I'll do is, uh, Gordon, thanks. I'll, I'll start it and then Ryan can chime in. Um, he has a little more expertise than, than I do in that area, but, but I guess what I would say is, is one of the things that we recognize with COVID. Based on there is the opportunity to try to improve our systems in a variety of ways. And with a little bit of this allocation, it, it allows us the opportunity to try to, to bring in as much fresh air as we can. To do the things we can do, um, to help any of those systems that are old. We do have some older buildings. Um, we're fortunate enough to have some newer buildings, but we do still have some older buildings that we want to prioritize and, and be able to look at. Um, and I agree, I, I can't answer the question on the priority, one versus the other, but based on COVID, based on local, state and federal. Recommendations, um, based on air quality, it is one of the things that we look to try to prioritize. And I'll, I'll leave it at that. Ryan, I don't know if you have anything else to add.
Yeah, I'll just state that, you know, as Kyle's mentioned around air quality. This is really about just getting more air exchanges in some of our older buildings where we don't have this. Where the air quality isn't as high that might be in a brand new building. And by providing for the fair at some of those buildings, that allows us to get additional air exchanges in the spaces and it just provides cleaner, fresher air for the space. Something that really came to light with COVID and some of the Ashra. Recommendations that were made, uh, throughout this pandemic. And so, and the other thing I would throw in there too is. With your considerations around the, the north revisions and the future conversations. There's a time limit associated with these S R funds, and I don't know that we would be able to get to a point where. A design and completion of this work and fund expenditure would be complete in time. For some of the north revision work. And so I, you know, would highly advise that we. Maintain this path to try to do the best we can with these funds towards HVAC improvements for our staff and students.
Okay, I just have one final question, which is for the superintendent, if you, if you're, you just thought, oh, maybe you're the person who's actually has the bird's eye view and understands. Both the instruction side and the facility side, like from, from your point of view, in terms of saying, we should spend the money on. HVAC and air as opposed to scrounging more money for Kelly and YG. Does this make sense as the, as the priority decision?
So it'd be a health decision to spend it on the HVAC and. What I want to make sure you understand is that there's still the money for the three librarians, if that's what the board chooses to do. So I think it's health for, um, the district's super important and, um. I think that we need to make sure that we're keeping our kids. Air is healthy and teachers and staff members as healthy as possible. Because it looks like maybe COVID sticking around for a bit. So let's, um. We, I just think we need to be really, but in the precaution now when we have the money. And I don't think we'll have, I don't think we'll be ready for anything with Kelly by the time we had to, would have had to use this money. So.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Laurel.
I, my, I have a question about, um. Charter schools. We have children, some children in charter schools and I, I, I fully admit, I don't understand. How that all works in our system. I know they exist. I know we have students that go to them. I know they're not necessarily ours, but we help in some ways, but not sure exactly how. Do we help with HVAC stuff since it's a health thing? Cause I know. That sped stuff is supported, but it is also like health things in this way supported.
Superintendent, it looks like you have an answer.
Well, I know that Christine and Andrea both know this answer, so I don't know who to call on. So I think Andrea's got her hand up, so.
Thanks, Andrea. You're muted. Yeah.
I guess it helps if you unmute yourself before you start talking. So, um. We actually do share our funds for S R one, two, and three with our five charter schools. And our charter schools were each asked to look at their operations, their needs. And to budget those funds accordingly. So some of our charter schools have used funding through one of these SRS to update their HVAC. But it really came down to letting each one of those charter schools identify the needs of their specific student population. And ensuring that they had communicated that to us to O D E as part of our plan to get that approved. And that we are now in the process of funding a lot of those projects. So as an example, just today I had one of our, uh, charter schools send me through some bills related to their HVAC system. And some of the work that they're doing and, uh, making sure that they get paid in the February or February. The Friday check run. So yes, we do have charter schools that are working with HVAC. We have them working with tutoring. All the things that we have looked at, they have also looked at and customized their plans. To meet what their student population truly needs to address the COVID pandemic. And what's happening in their specific and unique environment.
Uh, so could we? Get, I know that we're only talking about this, this funds as far as HVAC right now, but at some point, can we get a list of? How the SR, SR, you know what I'm talking about, uh, how, how they have applied to. It's really helpful to see that. And then to share it like when people ask me where all these funds go. And then I, I have a way to say it. And if it's on page 600 of the budget, just show me where to look.
It's actually on our website in other funds. And what I can do is I can send you the link. So it's easy for you to just click on it and go right in there. All of our five charters, their spending plans are part of our plan that is posted on our website and communicated up to OD.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Can we, are people ready to vote on this? Okay, Maya, you want to make a motion?
Oh, yes. If someone tells me what to say, um, I hope to, I mean, I moved to approve. S R funds to be used for HVAC. Uh, is that, is that what, what the motion is?
Hey Maya, how about, uh, I approve number five on the, or I move to approve number five on the consent agenda?
That would be the clearest. Yeah.
I move to approve number five on the consent agenda.
Second. Laurel, okay, Maya's moved and Laurel seconded. Any more discussion on this? Okay, all those in favor, raise your hand. Uh, the motion passes unanimously with six yes votes. Thank you. Okay, now we are moving for, to items for action at a future meeting. And the first item is approve resolution adopting the 2022. And categorizing taxes. And we have Superintendent Vanderkar and Andrea Bells.
Okay, I was thinking about the phantom toll booth and thinking that I should just say something like tacos. Burritos, chocolate covered strawberries, you know, it's that time of night. No, we know that you have been along with us for the ride through the budget committee meetings. That we have now arrived at the portion of the budget process. Where the board weighs in on any potential changes they would like to make. To spending as part of this upcoming budget. And prepares to adopt the budget at their meeting on the 22nd as well as. Accepting all of the tax and levy amounts. So I would be happy to answer any questions or give any feedback that is requested.
Does anyone have any questions? Laurel has her hand up.
So I had asked this earlier, um, it's about, uh, I would like to make. Well, we haven't made a motion yet, so I can't amend nothing, but, um, I would like for the minimum wage or the base wage. That I can't pass a budget without knowing that this is somewhere connected in, inside of this. And there were three things put forward about it possibly, which I can't talk about. Don't worry, Christine. Um, but. I have. We, this, this topic hasn't been finished and we're voting on the budget for next year. And so I want. Amendment to, to, I don't know how to do this, like, could I amend a lot of money for just if this passes?
So.
That's what I got.
Okay, so typically the way that this would be handled, uh, Laurel, is that at the conclusion of negotiation, so it's quite often. That we adopt a budget before a negotiation has been concluded. So what happens at that point is that then, once that agreement is ratified by the employee group. It's, you know, approved by the board, we come back to the board with a supplemental budget. So we come back to you to amend the adopted budget to reflect everything that has been agreed to. Between the district and the negotiating group. So this is not your last, you know, opportunity here. We do have a process in place through local budget law to handle the conclusion of our negotiations. And amend the budget to reflect all of the actions that are taken. So that is when you would want to do that, so that you ensure that everything that has been agreed to is reflected in the budget.
So I appreciate that. That's helpful, but also I remember with EA, a lot of times being told, it's not in the budget. It's, it, that's impossible. It's not in the budget. And so I, how do I forestall that? I don't want to be working with imaginary funds, but I also. Think this is really important to figure out a way for this to happen, which is nothing we need to do here, but. How? So I, I just pretend I know how much money we have to work with. I'm, you know what I mean? I know I'm not doing bargaining, but I'm just saying, I, I. I have seen the difference between what we're told this is absolutely it. There's nothing else. And then it's vastly more than that. Very recently, and I don't want to get in that, that quagmire. I, I, I deal with. Logic and reason. So if I'm told we can work and do this, I just want to be able to, I'm getting punchy. So you. I think you get, uh, the, 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 the just and the, the general, general idea of what I'm trying to say. I, I don't have enough information for the absolute important work I would like to happen. And to be able to inform and as a board, we have to approve things. That's, that's what I, I'm getting at.
Right. And that's why we don't ask you to approve a, just a random number, you might say. Because that could then lead to the negotiating team, assuming that is the, you know, that is now their parameters for what they can do. It's very important that this process happened at the negotiation table. It's why we don't do any kind of projecting of possible outcomes to those negotiations in either our five year forecast. Or in the budget, because we want that to be a part of the negotiation process between the board. And, you know, board in the district and the negotiating team for the employee group. But yes, whatever is ultimately decided, that will be brought to the board and it will be voted upon by. The complete board and the amendment made to the adopted budget to reflect what that is. Agreed to.
Okay, so Gordon has his hand up.
Amendment is the same as supplemental budget. I just want to define, make sure I, I have that definition correctly.
Okay, so there are two ways that you can, uh, basically amend or change a adopted budget. The first is through resolution. So a resolution, you've seen those before where we basically come in and we say. For example, we would like to spend our staffing pool dollars in the following way. We might bring that to you as a resolution. We're not asking to spend more money. We're just asking to spend it in a, you know, in a different way. We originally said this is money for the staffing pool. Now we know how we would like to spend it. So resolutions work great when you're just moving around authority. Because you now have the better information or more information on how you would like to spend. When you actually need to recognize additional revenue. So when you need to say, I have more money and I would like to spend it in the following way. That's when a supplemental budget is required, because you are actually changing. The total spend for the district. You're not just moving around, you know, what you want to do with it. You're saying, I have more money and this is how I want to. Expend it. So for example, we have a supplemental budget for this year related to our nutrition services program. In this case, we actually have more money from the state and from the feds related to supporting this program. We want to be able to recognize these dollars. And we want to be able to, you know, to say, now we want to be able to spend them, because you know, it's great to have the money, but. You also want to be able to pay all of people, pay for the food, all of those things. That requires a supplemental budget process. And by the way, because we are increasing the spending in this fund. By more than 10%, we are required by local budget law to hold a hearing similar to the hearing we had in this meeting for the budget. At the meeting at, uh, June 22nd, we will have a public hearing specifically for the supplemental budget for nutrition services. So these are the two ways that throughout the year, the board can amend or change the adopted budget for what is needed. And it is, you know, typical that in the past, I can remember years where we had up to three supplemental budgets. When we had a negotiation conclude, we had other changes that occurred. So these are, you know, normal and usual. And part of the process to ensure that our budget continues to be a living document and not just, you know, frozen in place at a specific time. In the year, when we may not have all of the information we need. Such as the conclusion of negotiations or other factors.
Gordon.
Thank you. Um, so the quick thing about libraries, we don't need to talk about this. I know we're not voting until the next meeting. I just wanted. Say on the record, when we get there at our next meeting, that, that I will make a motion that we. That we designate money for, uh, to put three librarians into. High needs elementary schools of the, to be chosen by the district leadership. Starting next year and that we, that will, uh, I mean, we can't commit for five years because budgets are year by year, but. With the goal of running, uh, a five year experiment and we'll allocate some money to. To do a before and after evaluation of that, so we can evaluate it. I, I just wanted to say that on the record. And then I have three questions, Andrea. So one, and I'll just throw them all out there. I think you, I think they're not too complicated. You, you'll keep them in your head. One is. About the HB 4030 money for staff retention. Do we, either, do either, do we know where that's going? How much it was, what the process is? Second was, I wanted to confirm that enrollment decline does not necessarily mean a proportionate decline in revenue, because if. Like if theoretically all districts across the state had the same enrollment drop by the same demographic. By all the same demographics, then funding would, would be constant is my understanding of it. And obviously that doesn't happen. So it'll be affected some, but it's not like a straight line thing. And the third thing is. Kind of to, to ask what I think Laurel was asking, which is, you know, we've had discussions in the. We had discussions in open meetings about wanting to set a floor on. That, that's an above poverty floor for employee wages and outside of public meetings. And outside of public meetings, we've discussed a variety of options. And the question that I really want to know is, if we adopt this budget, will some of those options become off the table? And what I'm wondering is, we can't talk about this in a concrete way here, because it involves things that are confidential. I'm wondering if between now and our next meeting, there might be a way for us to get that information, whether it's from you or from, or from Christine, and whether it's in executive session or something like that. Because that, that's the thing I'm trying to figure out, like, if we're, if we're maybe unknowingly cutting off some options by saying, we're going to approve this budget. And I know you can always reallocate money, but if the answer is, well, yeah, you could reallocate money and like have 60 kids in a class and get rid of the nurses and stuff like that, then that, I mean, for me, that's not a good option. So that's kind of the question that I'm, I'm, I would be, love to get a sense of that next week or in whatever way that's doable without violating confidentiality.
Okay, so I will start with House Bill 4030. Am I getting it right? So our application to the state of Oregon is due on the 6th of June. So it's moved, I think, two times, because what's happened is a lot of school districts have said, we need a little more time. It's really busy right now, but we want to reach out to our employees. And we want to have, you know, a good process to determine what's most important to them. So we have completed surveys to our staff to get an idea of what they are interested in seeing out of this. I will be meeting with Brooke Wagner tomorrow morning to work on a first draft of this so that we can have an idea, you can basically take the results of all of this interaction and discussion and bring it into, into narrative. And I'll let Brooke discuss that a little bit more.
Thanks Andrea. For House Bill 4030, it was critical that we partner with our employee groups to work through a problem of practice. And we, I was able to meet with Sheila Wagner, president of OSEA, Sabrina Gordon and Emelda Cortez, president and vice president of EEA. And we brainstormed and we landed on a survey. The reason we landed on a survey to solicit feedback is because of the timing of the year. It was, it would be difficult to pull people together. So we drafted some surveys, sent drafts back and forth to each other incorporating the ideas that we wanted to ask staff. The main categories were supportive working conditions, new staff supports and school level structural conditions. So we asked a series of questions about rankings, important to me, not important to me, no opinion, and then a final ranking. And then we also gave people the opportunity to give feedback in an open-ended question. We had 277 classified staff respond and we had 361 certified staff respond. And the, I don't have the exact, I don't want to use the exact number, but we have the overwhelming, the most important thing for people was, get to it. I've got the report, which is like 30 pages in my hand, so hold on. Supportive working conditions. And some of those examples under supportive working conditions are time for planning and collaboration, job, job embedded learning, retention bonuses, peer-to-peer support. So we will be crafting a problem of practice that is wide and encompasses our ability to then, after we are given our grant, working, going back to OSEA and EEA and working out the final details of where those monies will fall under those categories. So it was a really interesting way that the state set it up in the sense of how quickly and the amount of engagement that was required. But then we have all next year to spend the money and then really delve it based on the feedback received from our staff. Design some things collaboratively that could address the things that we were able to receive through the brainstorming sessions and through the survey.
I know this is not quite on the budget thing, but if it's possible at some point to get those survey results in a way that is, that is, you know, wiped clean of any identifying information, since we've been talking about retention issues for a long time, I'd be very interested in seeing that whenever that gets.
And it was an anonymous survey. So in that sense, we don't have to, we did ask what, you know, what we asked, the only clarifying questions we asked, you know, are you OSEA, EEA, because we wanted it to be the same survey. We didn't want to have separate surveys. And what level you worked at? And, or if you didn't work at a level, if you worked in an up, maybe a district level department. So those are the only, which I do not believe were enough to identify anyone individually. So we'll be able to get those shared with you. We, like Andrew said, we sat down to finish the process on Monday and Tuesday, no, excuse me, Tuesday. And on Monday, the holiday, they sent an email out saying we're extending. So there was a last minute reprieve.
Thank you, Brooke. That was, sounds like a good process that you figured out. Alicia.
I think Andrea is still.
Oh, I'm sorry, Andrea. Were you still answering?
Yeah, I would just, Gordon had two more questions that he was interested in. So on the question around enrollment and our, you might say, our piece of the pie. So yes, if everyone loses students at the same rate, our piece of the pie remains the same. Our problem here is not so much the piece of the pie, but the fact the pie is not big enough. So we're looking at, you know, most of the school districts out there have said, you know, to really maintain current service level, we need something closer to a 9.6 or 9.7 billion dollar state school fund. And we have 9.3. So yes, you know, if we, you know, if we lose at the same rate, we're still, our, our piece of that pie is still there. It's just the pie isn't big enough to really cover everything that we need. And that's not just us. It's most school districts out there are experiencing this, because of course, costs are rising much faster than 3.33% over a biennium. And a lot of folks are trying to figure out what we're going to do to catch up once we don't have the federal funds to fill in that gap. And the final question around if you were to adopt this with that preclude anything in negotiations. No, we have not utilized the funds that, you know, would be set aside for negotiations for anything else in this budget. So they're not dedicated to staffing or any other purpose.
Okay.
Thanks, Judy. Um, so I have a question. First, I'll just say, I have a question because been hearing all year and then again today about the need for counselors. And I honestly cannot remember if we had added any counselors to this year's budget. I don't think we did, but I know it's a specific, but if we have the funds, we have to make a choice. I'm just wondering if we've been able to do that. School counselors at the high school. I could just go specific, but I'm just wondering kind of overall. Thanks.
I don't know who will answer that. If that's Andrea or superintendent or Brooke.
So Brooke, can you tell us, I know maybe not in this budget, but did we add any anywhere? I mean, recently, we added one to every elementary in the middle of Gus's superintendency. And then I think we've added some at each high school, but I don't know that we added any this year.
We, we have held steady, Alicia, for school counselors. We, two years back, and Andy might be able to tell me exactly, we had, out of high school success, we added some additional freshman counselors that were weighted based on high school enrollment. And so elementary, though, it was probably four years ago that we added, made sure every elementary and subsequently in the last two years, we made sure every elementary has a full-time counselor. And what, which wasn't the case necessarily in the past.
Laurel.
That's the thing that we should be able to speak to, like getting the librarians, getting the counselors and knowing, and I, I'm sorry, but at a previous meeting, I thought there was a plan in place to add more counselors this year because of everything that was going on. And I guess that wasn't successful. Is that correct?
I just want to be clear on, are we talking counselors or mental health specialists? Because we have school counselors and we also have mental health specialists.
Okay, well, I don't, I don't work for the school district, so when I talk about a counselor, I talk about it in layman's terms, right? I'm going to be talking about is if the, what, the, the voting public thinks of when they think of counselors, if they're not part of the educational system. So we need people, right? Because counselors are pretty much just academic advisors and we need people to do mental health supports at high levels. So that's probably what, Alicia, I don't want to put words in your mouth. Is that what you were speaking to?
Yeah, I'm mute. Yeah, sorry, Brooke. I did use the term counselor. And I know counselor is different in elementary and I know we were going to get a key to understand it all, but I, I just, as it relates to all the talk that's been going on earlier.
So we do have.
Talking about. Thank you.
Yeah. And then it, because I, sometimes we have some school-based, they play a different role. And some of our school-based counselors are more prone to where we think of maybe academic counseling. So we, it, it covers a broad area and there, they have four domains that they bring to school counseling. And one of those is the mental health supports. But specifically, we have five mental health specialists for next year in the budget. We have two that are dedicated to some of our more specific buildings, our Fox Hollow campus and our Echo Campus and programming. And then we have three that will be coming and working. What we are finding, we know that we have students all across in our buildings who are needing access to mental health services. What we are also finding is that when they go maybe to their healthcare providers or they go, they access one of our, our health centers, there's a six to eight month waiting period. It's a very long waiting period. And so what we are trying to really do is work to triage our students that need that really acute care. We know three is not enough. It's where we're starting, particularly. We have four of the five hired already. We also will have our mental health specialists working hand in hand with our social workers. So they'll be connecting with community agencies. And I feel fortunate that we have been able to get, you know, when we attempted, had three, two or three failed attempts at hiring in the fall. This past spring, we were able to get a more robust high pool and hiring. When we have heard from many of our partners, Looking Glass, other places in the community, but they have not been able to fill their mental health specialists. So we're definitely in a place in the community where we're lacking candidates. So hopefully that gives you a little bit more information on that front.
Yes, my, I have, that was an addendum to Alicia's question, made me think of it. My question had to do with the survey. I, I heard you say that that we'll have access to this. And did, do, do the unions already have access to this? Do they, because they worked collaboratively with you, you're saying? And they have all that information now?
They were sent the results and they asked us to clean it a little bit differently. So we're, we're in the process of doing that. But we, our highest priority right now is taking all the feedback that we received and getting the grant written. Because it was on a very short timeline. So we will send the report with the comments. And this is all for House Bill 4030. That was the money specifically to be able to use next year for staff retention and recruitment. And one of the, the biggest requirements is making sure we collaborated with our employee groups to solicit feedback on how that money should be spent in, in broader terms. And that's the, so we're following the state's prescriptive prescription for the grant. And we'll be able to share, we can share that in the Friday memo, the, the, the data that we collected. And be able to present that to you and the open-ended comments.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
I think no more hands are up. So I'm going to guess that, let me just see, we have the adopting the resolution for the supplemental budget number one. It's the next item for information, making appropriations for the 2021, 22 fiscal year. That's the second item for information.
Yes, and this will, this is actually a first read. And we will ask you to not only vote on this at the meeting on the 22nd, but there will also, as I mentioned, be a public hearing related to this supplemental budget to ensure we are in line with local budget law, which states that any change in a specific fund budget over 10% needs to have a public hearing to ensure that the public has the opportunity to, you know, speak about that change. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. And we will be revisiting this at the meeting on the 22nd.
Sorry, Laurel, your hands up. Was that from a previous? Okay. Any questions about that? So we'll have, will the public hearing, I do have a question, be a separate hearing like in the beginning of the meeting as we did. Okay.
Yes, it will definitely need to be held as a separate hearing, a separate from our usual public comment to ensure that folks know that this is a specific topic that they can come and speak on.
Great. Thank you. Okay, so I think no more questions about that. We have two more items for information. One is the adoption of the board calendar for 2022, 2022, 23. And I see Superintendent Vanderkar's name on that one.
So it looks a lot like the one that we set up for last year. We tend to schedule our, our board meetings on the first Wednesday and the third Wednesday of every month. On occasion, we might have a religious observance or winter, spring break, something like that, that crops in there, so things get adjusted. So you have two meetings in every month except for January and April because of winter break and spring break, making it hard to have leadership and getting everything planned for the next month. So I think you're all used to what it looks like. And we just need to vote on it in public next time. And do we have any questions?
I just have one comment. I think people should probably hold many more Wednesdays as potential dates. So this is our skeletal schedule, but this year we've met more often. So my recommendation is to put more meetings in your calendar going forward. Okay, no more, no questions. Then our last item for information is considering the adoption of a new board policy. The information about statewide testing. And we have Christine Nesbit to talk about that.
Hello. So in your board packet is a proposed new board policy called information about statewide testing. This policy is being presented as a result of a request made in May, 20, May. And basically, the, the, the crux of it is that we want to make sure that our school staff feel comfortable and safe in talking with parents and giving their honest opinion about statewide testing. And so that is part of what this policy accomplishes. Another piece of the policy is just to kind of describe parents' rights to opt out of statewide.
Another piece of the policy is just to kind of describe parents' rights to opt out of statewide assessments. Finally, the policy indicates that educators may not be retaliated against or encouraged or directed for sharing the, for sharing information with parents about their opinion, whatever their opinion is, positive or negative. Are there any questions? This will be brought back to you at a future meeting for approvals. Today is the first read. So if there are any comments, though, that would be helpful to have now.
Gordon.
My only comment is that I appreciate it. And I appreciate the work that Christine put into crafting the policy. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was very fast. Appreciate it too. Any other comments for this? We'll be voting on it in our next meeting then. So the last thing on our agenda are items for future meetings. Does anyone, anything, when, any, is there anything anyone wants to bring up? Gordon.
I'm sorry. I know the last thing anybody wants is more items for discussion. I had two things that I wanted to, I have two things. One is, I want to at least put on the June 8th calendar, the, the possibility for us to consider whether we want to hire outside counsel to help us figure out the best way to do the superintendent evaluation process. Just to not both, because I think district council is probably flooded with work and to not have an employee of the person being evaluated to be in that situation. I'm not saying we should or shouldn't. I just want to, I would like to be able to consider that at our June 8th meeting. If we're trying to move quickly on this and there are legal questions about it. So that's one. You look like I didn't explain it well, Judy.
No, I, I don't understand why we would need counsel. I'm sorry.
Well, my understanding is, maybe I'm wrong. My understanding was that there's a legal question of whether we have gone through the correct procedures in terms of how we're doing the evaluation or what was done or not done midterm. And if there's, if there's no legal issue, I might, maybe I'm wrong. That was my impression. So I just want to have it there. So if there is a legal question, we can consider that question on June 8th. And then my, should we talk about that? And then I can give you my other one. You're muted Judy.
Do we have other nods to put that? We need three people on the board to consider. I think you're just saying to get the resource we need if.
I'm just saying to kind of put a, on the agenda where we can discuss, discuss if we decide we want to, whether or not we would want the help of outside counsel on that issue.
So any of, anyone else interested in that on the agenda? I see another one, another hand. So we have three board members. So, okay, on the agenda.
And then my, my second thing, which is, which is a lot less time sensitive is just to change the teach with fidelity thing in the board policy that Eric Anderson mentioned to the integrity language, whatever the language is that they have. Not a rush, but it would be good to have the policy aligned with that, that new language.
Okay, to put that in the queue. Who else is interested in doing that? Okay, we have board members agreeing. So it's on for future meeting. Okay? It might be a really easy fix. So let's check that out. If it's easy, we'll do it quickly. Laurel.
All right, I'm tired. I'm trying to remember everything I wanted to put on, on there. I do know I want for the board calendar, I want to amend the policy, even though it seems to say it clearly. Christine says it doesn't. So I want to amend the policy that says that there has to be a board agreement to change the board calendar. And so I read it that it says that, but I've been told on no uncertain terms that it doesn't. So the board needs to look at it and make it very clear. Because we are beholden to the public and switching things at the last minute, like we've done several times this year is per our needs, not the public's needs. And I think it's important that we try, make sure we're very consistent. I know it's not always easy, but it's very important. That's part of the communication fun.
So are you saying when we change, like a meeting from, just anything on this, on the calendar, is that?
Right, there was one, well, you know, I mentioned it.
Yeah.
A few times to you. So it is not a surprise. And then when we flipped the meeting and then I didn't even know it was flipped. And so things, the clarity around that, I want, I want very clear terms in policy. So we don't have more public saying, I showed up and there was no meeting. What's going on?
Are there other board members that would like to address that in policy? So I see two hands, three hands. Okay, it's on the list. Anything else?
That's it for now. I'm sure I had more, but my brain is not all here.
You'll have another opportunity, I'm sure Laurel. So, okay, then I am going to adjourn this meeting. Board meeting, it's 10:39.
Early.